One hundred twenty-one constitutes a quorum. The constable informs us that a quorum is present. The fourth session of the two-hundred-and-fifty-seventh annual town meeting will now come to order. I ask everybody to please be quiet. I try to only do announcements that I think are important for people to hear, but they have to be able to hear them. Thanks. First, are there any new members who have not yet been sworn into town meeting? I don't see any. We are good. Schedule review. We next meet next Monday, May eleventh, and Wednesday, the thirteenth. We are also scheduled for the following week, Monday, the eighteenth, and Wednesday, May twentieth. Reminder about tally cards and checking in. In your second town meeting packet, you received a set of red and green tally vote cards. If you forgot your cards this evening, please go to the check-in table now to get a blank set. You must write your name and precinct number on each card. Tally vote cards without names will not be counted. Also, please remember that you must check in every night at the check-in table when you arrive. If you don't check in, we won't count your vote if it comes to a tally vote. So you must check in every night. Seats on the floor of the auditorium may be occupied only by town meeting members except for the front row, which may be used by members of the press and by members of town committees and staff participating in presentation or discussion of articles. Such persons must wear non-voter stickers, which are available at the check-in table. Seats in front of me on the right are occupied by the select board, town manager, town finance director, member of the town manager's office staff, and an IT staff person. Finance committee is seated to my left. Spectators and town residents who are not town meeting members may be seated in the bleachers to the rear of the auditorium. New information for town meeting members can be found at the back table to my left over that way. Old information can be found on the back table to my right. If you wish to speak, you must raise your hand and be recognized when appropriate. Hold up a red or green card to indicate pro or con on the issue. When you are called on, please first state your name and precinct. If you forget, I will interrupt and ask you to do so. If you need more than three minutes or more than five minutes when speaking to your motion, you must request additional time before speaking, and town meeting will vote on your request. If you are speaking from the floor, please speak into a microphone that will be provided once you are recognized. This will allow viewers outside the auditorium to hear you. The microphone will be on when it is handed to you. Please hold it close to your mouth when you speak. Non-members who wish to speak should stand at the rear of the right-hand aisle, this one right in front of me. Any registered voter of the town of Amherst who is recognized by the moderator may speak without special permission. Others may speak with the permission of a majority. If you're making an amendment to a motion, the amendment must be presented in writing with four copies submitted to the front table. Procedural motions, such as a motion to refer or a motion to dismiss, do not need to be presented in writing. If you're making an amendment -- oh, never mind that sentence, because we're done with the operating budget. If you make any motion from the floor, it must be the first thing you do after you are recognized and have identified yourself. You cannot speak first and then make a motion. If you've not already done so, please check your cellphone. Make sure it is silenced or off. The election of three members of the town meeting coordinating committee will take place during the fifth session of town meeting on May eleventh. The following candidates have been nominated: Pat Holland and Alan Powell. One vacancy is still open. Write-ins are encouraged. On May thirteenth at six fifteen, there will be a caucus to fill a town meeting vacancy in Precinct Seven. Again, that's a Precinct Seven vacancy. Caucus, May thirteenth at six fifteen. If at any point in time you're confused about proceedings, it is appropriate to call a point of order and ask for clarification. It's also always okay to phone me, send me an email, or see me prior to town meeting if you need an explanation of any kind. We begin tonight with Article fourteen. If we could get the motion for Article fourteen on the screen. And there it is in front of you, and I call on Mr. Slaughter to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town raise and appropriate six-hundred-eighty-four-thousand-five-hundred-fifty dollars to repair and/or improve buildings and facilities, and to meet such appropriation, six-hundred-eighty-four-thousand-five-hundred dollars be raised by taxation.
I hear a second. You may speak to your motion.
I'll be speaking for the Select Board and JCPC. Both unanimously recommended this article to you. I'd like to begin by thanking everybody for the comments and questions last time when we did Article thirteen. Article fourteen is continuation of the Joint Capital Planning Committee's proposed capital spending plan for the coming fiscal year. Obviously, in the JCPC report, it does outline the outlying years and some of the things that have come onto our horizon as far as what we think is going to happen. I will tell you, though, it's very variable. We've had things that come up without notice in the given fiscal year. I think it was last year, maybe the year before. We had some repair work that needed to be done at the fire station, and that had not previously been on our five-year plan. So things come in and go from that, and I do want to encourage people to participate in the joint capital planning process to help us keep on track and stay true to what we want to do with regard to that. Regarding Article fourteen in particular, there are several items on there from some general sort of maintenance-type things. You'll see in the Finance Committee book on page fifty-four, the Bang Center has window repairs inasmuch as we probably need to replace windows there. What we're going to do first, to give us a little more time, is to do some repairs to the mechanical workings of some of the windows, try to get them functioning a bit better. One thing I did want to spend a moment on, if you'll notice, it's at East Street School. We've already approved a rather large borrowing, actually, to do some repair work and some upgrade work at the East Street School that is currently underway. The original front of the building, if you've seen that building, it has a bit of an archway at the front. That's going to be reopened somewhat like it was originally. It'll be different, obviously, than it was originally, but in part, that's to create an opening and a welcoming front to that structure. But along with that, the LSSE department is going to move this fall, if all the work is done, I believe that September is the target date, into those facilities there at East Street School. And part of the process of letting people know and continuing to let people know that that is where LSSE is going to live will be a sign out front. And if you've looked at your Finance Committee book, you'll notice that it says $25,000 for a sign, which sounds like a lot of money, and it is. But I will tell you a few things about these kind of things. You'll notice all the dollar amounts are nice round numbers. Typically, we pick a number, or it is recommended to us a number that's a little bit bigger than it probably will really cost us, and part of that is because it's a lot easier to not spend it all than to come back for more money. So what we do with those little residuals that come back are things like what we'll see in Article, I think it's seventeen or eighteen. We repurpose them. But nonetheless, signage is terribly expensive. I was surprised by the size of that number as well. I went online, like we all do nowadays, and checked out what signs cost, and I looked at a very --
Excuse me a second. Am I here a point of order? Can we get a microphone over there, please? Stand up, please, or wave, or something like that. There, they couldn't see who it was.
Ruth Hazard, Precinct Three. I apologize, but it may be because I'm hard of hearing, but I'm really having a difficult time hearing the speaker. There's also a fan. I wonder if there's any way perhaps to increase the amplitude or to slow down a bit so that we can all hear. Thank you.
So let's try three different things. First, talk slowly and get the mic real close to your mouth. Sound folks, do what you can. I know you're balancing, and it's really hard to do with the fans on, but let's just try and go slower, close to the mic, and see if we can be a little louder. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I'll try to be more direct into the microphone. So I was talking about the signage that is proposed in Article fourteen for the East Street School and talking about the cost of that, and it seems quite high. And I think that if you do a little research online, what you'll find is that signage is terribly expensive. I looked at some relatively inexpensive signage, very simple, not installed, just what's it take to buy the sign, not the post to hold it up or anything like that, and you can get to six or eight thousand dollars pretty quickly. And so this will be probably a good-sized sign. It will need to go through the Design Review Board process, and so it won't be some terribly garish thing unless the Design Review Board lets us do something crazy, which I doubt they will, and I don't think we want to. But it is, you know, there will probably be some lighting that's necessary to illuminate the sign, which means there'll need to be some electrical work to get the lights turned on at that location. It will not be on the common itself. It will be on the property in front of the school. I have checked with the facilities director about that. But nonetheless, with the move of LSSE from the center of town to that location, which I think, from what I understand, they're excited about because it gives them more space and more opportunity to do the kind of programming they want to do, letting everybody know where that is and how to find it, and that that's where they live now is an important thing. So I wanted to take a minute and point that one out because I figured somebody would want to ask about that, and rightly so. But again, the Select Board and the Joint Capital Planning Committee both recommend this article to you.
Thank you. Mr. Braun for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee reviewed the JCPC report very carefully, and we voted six to zero to approve it, one absent, for all the reasons my former colleague just expressed.
Thank you. And Mr. Slaughter, anything to add on behalf of the Select Board? Nothing. And did you tell us what their recommendation of vote was? Okay, thank you. Okay, this requires a majority vote, and if you go to page fifty-four of the Finance Committee booklet, you will see the list of items, and we're going to go through the sections pretty quickly to see if there's specific questions, then we'll open it up to general discussion, then we will come to a vote. So anything on building envelope repairs? I see no hands. Anything on Town Hall? Yes, right there, fourth row back.
I'm questioning the floors in the Bang Center. I see that it did say they were going to do the big room, and I hope that is the case. So I just want to be reassured that it is. Because it really needs it. Did I say who I was? Barbara Ford, Precinct Two. Excuse me.
Yes, Bahanowitz, why don't you come forward?
Good evening, Ron Bahanowitz, the Director of Facilities for schools in the town as well. The intent is to do the, what we call the ALAR, the Large Activity Room. Floor is part of that. We also, with the flooring, the main hallway, if you're in the Bangs and you walk down the main hallway, the floor is cracked up. They put a ceramic stone floor over plywood, and over the years, you can look down and you can actually see where the plywood is. So what we will do with this request, we'll go as far as we can with the flooring, and I can reassure you that, and this is not a good thing to say, but we'll be back for more money for interior maintenance and flooring throughout the Bangs as well.
Thank you. Anything else on Town Hall or Bangs Community Center? Yes, right there. Yes.
Ruth Smith, Precinct Six. I also have a question about Bangs. I see that there will be a clinic built on that bottom floor, and I know there are a number of activities that go on there. For example, the arthritis exercise meets there three days a week, and I was wondering what's going to happen to that when a clinic is put there.
Mr. Bahanowitz.
Yes, the clinic that we're actually working with is going to go in the space that the LSE offices are in. The clinic is not going to do anything into the, what we consider the pole room, the glass room, and the interior meeting room, which are on the bottom floor. So the clinic is kind of in that separate little wing, and the only thing that they will do is they'll share bathrooms. They'll have their own clinician-type of bathroom, but the general public bathrooms will be shared.
Yes, on the aisle right there.
Hilda Greenbaum, Precinct One. On the Bang Center, why is the landlord paying to build out the space for the tenant?
Mr. Bahanowitz.
Would you like to address that, John, or --
I'm sorry, Mr. Misanti.
We're not. The requested funds in the capital plan are for the public spaces within the building. Any build-out of the clinic itself and the interior spaces will be by the tenant.
Any questions on Munson Library? Any questions on East Street School? See no hands there. South Amherst Campus. Sorry. Yes, right there in the aisle? Wait, wait, wait for the mic.
Wait, wait, wait. Hey Turner, Precinct Six. I still find $25,000 for a sign. I think there's something wrong with that. I have purchased signs, and I sort of know about that.
Mr. Bahanowitz.
All right. Mr. Glover, would you just pull up? I actually brought with us a couple samples of a couple procurements that I've just recently made within the last year. Here at the middle school, this sign to the right that says District Offices, there was no sign on the left. We've installed this sign on the right. That sign that says District Offices cost me $3,000. It's not made out of gold. It's made out of aluminum letters. Each one of those letters is approximately $400 apiece, and then the installation. The other thing, what I contend with all the time, is I have to pay prevailing wages. And I have to pay, when we do projects, the laborers and so forth are making forty-something dollars an hour to do the work. So that's why I like that sign there, even though the letters are only $400 apiece, the other money comes in the labor. So that one cost me $3,000. Mr. Glover, would you go to the next one? Down here, I have two, what I call directional signs for the middle school. It tells you where the central office is versus the middle school. The two signs, the materials alone, which my staff is going to install, the materials alone cost me $6,500. So the one thing with East Street School, what I'm envisioning, is I'm actually envisioning something that's going to fit within to the characteristic neighborhood of that building. So I can see two brick pillars, and then I can see a sign within it. And then, as Mr. Slaughter said, we're going to run electricity out there so that we can light it. LSE runs programs all day long and into the evenings, and in the winter months, it's going to be very essential that they can be seen from where they are. Additionally, one of the things that we probably didn't say very good on that is it's actually East Street signage I should have put on there, because there'll be other signs. There'll be a couple of directional signs, and there'll be some directories of what's in the building and where's in it in the building on the side of the building. So I know it is a lot of money, but it's real. And the other thing, as Mr. Slaughter said, in all of the projects that I have done for the town and I continue to do, I spend as the least amount that we can, and we have repurposed money in the past, and that's what we'll continue to do.
Thank you. Anything else on South Amherst Campus? Yes, right there in the center.
I have a question about, first, the name, South Amherst Campus. I believe the ARPS website calls it the Southeast Campus. And also, I am wondering why we are spending money on a building for twenty-five students and not consolidating them into the high school if it's going to be empty. So that's one of the things that I have concerns about.
Mr. Slaughter.
So I'm going to wear my employee hat as opposed to my Select Board hat in answering this question a little bit. As many of you may know or not know, I do work for the schools. Southeast Campus is in an older building. It does involve a small number of students relative to, say, the high school or the middle school. Nonetheless, part of the programming definition with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is that that school be separate and distinct, so it is not able to be, as it's currently defined, within the confines of the high school building. So it is a program that is designed to be apart from the existing school and school structure. So that's part of why it exists in a different location, and that's why, since we're using this facility, we want to keep it in as good a state as we can.
Yes, want to follow up on that?
Since it's serving --
Identify yourself again.
Vera Dwangmaney. Since it's serving the regional school population, shouldn't it be shared by the regional towns as well?
Mr. Bahanowitz, or Mr. Poole? Who's raising their hand? Mr. Bahanowitz.
It is a town asset, and therefore, just like the elementary schools, they're town assets as well, and so the town pays for the capital expenditures. In this particular case, whether the school is there or not there, this is a necessity. These are, on the back of the building, if you choose to go back there and look, there's actually what it looks like, there's two dog houses that are attached to the building. They've been hit by snowplows and so forth. What's going to happen is our inspection services, our inspectors inspect all of our school buildings. At a minimum, we get inspected four times a year between the fire department and the inspection services. And when they come through, they're going to say that these are dilapidated, and they need to be replaced, and that's what this is for. So if, in the event that South Amherst Campus was to relocate to somewhere else within the community, this would be required of that building for it to be used no matter what. And it is also on the old section of the building, the 1920s section of the building versus the 1960s section of the building. So one would say that if you were to do anything with the building, say we were to change its use, there may be the opportunity where we would take down the newest section, I mean the 60s section, because it really doesn't fit within the characteristics of that building and still maintain the older school building. So in short, no matter who's in the building, it's something that's going to be required.
Anything on, yeah, Ms. Tomlin.
The idea of using the South Amherst School was to save the town and the region money. Some of those students would have to be in, well, it was the Hampshire Educational Collaborative and other places, so it is money savings. I'm not sure which budget is in, but the Regional School Committee should be addressing that, and I turn that back to you, Vera, on that committee. You can question that. I think you'll find that it is less money for us to maintain that. As far as who pays for parts of that maintenance, I'm not sure. Maybe a regional commitment.
Yes, Mr. Bahanowitz.
And just one more comment on that. When we moved the students from East Street School to South, we combined them into the South Amherst Campus, or we call it SEC. When we did that combine there, we actually did a build-out in the South Amherst School. You, the community, actually gave us the money to do the build-out, and then we had an agreement with the Regional School District where they were actually paying back the town on a, like a ten-year lease. They were paying back the town that money. In this case, again, as I said, this is not for program space. This is not to do with the students. It's to do with the building itself.
Thank you. Yeah, hand on the aisle right there.
Janet McGowan, Precinct Eight. I have a question, just sparked by the previous discussion about the regional middle school charging LSSE, or trying to charge them like $30,000 to use the pool. Does the town charge the Regional School District rent for using the Southeast Campus? Is there, or is there a policy on that, or some kind of, you know, to me, it looks like one big pot, but it really isn't, so.
Mr. Bahanowitz.
So let me, I really don't want to get into big discussion about LSE, but let me clarify something. We have never charged LSE $30,000 for the use of the pool. We did have a charge for approximately $10,000, $12,000 per year to help us offset the cost of the operation of the pool. The other thing that should be noted is that the school system does a tremendous amount for the LSE programs and all of the recreational programs within the town. We have, this summer, we will have camps all day long for six weeks. The day, the school is going to get out of session on June 22nd, and on June 23rd, LSE and all the camps are moving into the schools. And they'll be here for the six or eight weeks during that. We also have just, there's a new food program that we've gone out for a grant, a new food program, and we're going to feed hundreds of kids this summer. This is the first time we're doing that. So although with the pool, we are trying to recover some of the operating costs, LSE uses all of our resources, all over the place, all the time, for zero cost. And as far as the regional school, there is an agreement, I think it's like a dollar we pay or something like that. There's some kind of legal agreement or something, but it's not, there's not a fair market wager or anything like that.
Moving on to Police Station. Any questions there? I see no hands. How about Public Works Department? And Cherry Hill Golf Course? I see no hands. Oh, yes. Front row center, please identify yourself.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah, yeah, thanks. Larry Kelly, Precinct Five. So I missed my opportunity on Monday night, because as you know, we spent, what, $11,000 and $12,500 for a greens mower and some other fancy lawnmower, so that's whatever that is, $25,000, $26,000. See, that's not part of the operation budget. So like at the first night of town meeting, we approved $245,000 for the operation budget, but that's separate from --
Excuse me. I hear a point of order. Please rise, identify yourself, wait for the microphone.
Siobhan Best, Precinct Nine. Mr. Moderator, I was under the understanding that town meeting members are supposed to, when they stand up, address you and not necessarily the rest of the auditorium. Thanks.
I did not feel that he was violating any rule decorum there, but I will keep an eye on it. Thank you. You may go back again. Yes, talk to me.
I'll talk to the hand. So on the first night of town meeting, we approved $245 for the operation budget, but the operation budget does not include capital. So here on Monday night, we approved the $12,500 and the $11,000 for lawn mowers. So that's $25,000 or $6,000, whatever that is. Now tonight, we're approving $7,000 for fixing the roof, so that's another $7,000. And the $245,000 that we approved on the first night of town meeting did not include employee benefits, which is another, and that's somewhere else in the budget, that's another $40,000, I think. So when you add up all of these, it comes easily to $300,000. So that's the cost of operating Cherry Hill, which is fine. You can say, well, it's great and all this other stuff, but it's $300,000. And in 28 years, the golf course has never taken in $300,000. And the other thing you have to consider is it's been on the list now, because they project, the JCPC always has five-year plans, and the one thing that's been on there keeps getting pushed and pushed and pushed, so it'll probably come up next year, is redoing the entire parking lot out there, and that's like $100,000. So, you know, tonight, it's only seven grand for the little thing that we bought in 2001, so you got to question how great was it when we bought it in 2001, the clubhouse. It was a Kmart clubhouse to begin with, but the real thing that's going to hit you is next year when you have to repave it.
Anything on Crocker Farm? Yes, third row from the back.
Alan Powell, Precinct Four. I have a question about the preschool playground. I want to know exactly what is being done with that $25,000 this year, because I understand going forward, there's going to be a request for more money to do some more work in the future, and if you could let us know what that is. While I'm standing, if I could also ask about the exterior doors at Fort River. When I did the video for the bus tour, I went around to those doors to try and find out what was wrong with them. It's kind of invisible. If you can explain what's wrong with those doors.
Sure. Mr. Bahanowitz.
So in regards to the Crocker Farm Playground, it's the preschool playground that we have in the front of the building. The preschool, there's approximately 70 students in preschool right now at the Crocker Farm School. There's several kids with different types of physical restrictions. The playground right this minute is not ADA accessible, and it's from the sidewalk in, it's not ADA accessible, and from the building out, it's not ADA accessible. So the $25,000 that I'm requesting is to make that ADA accessible, and the way we're going to do that is two things. We have to pay, and we have to put a sidewalk in from -- We have to pay, and it's, we have to put a sidewalk in from the side of the building out to the, to the, uh, the, uh, out to the building, and then we have to build a ramp. We have to build a ramp. And there's a, there's a, about a, almost an eight or nine-inch drop when you come off the little porch where those kids have to come off. So picture, picture, you know, a, a four-year-old or a three-year-old, uh, out there, and their legs aren't that big, and they're gonna take a nine-inch step off of, off of that, and never mind have a, have some kind of handicap, uh, impediment or something. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna build a ramp off to get them out there. Later on, what we're trying to do, there's a, there's a group of the, uh, PGO and some of the school staff that actually are putting in for the Rotary Grant, uh, and trying to get some CPA money as well to now buy apparatus for those children that is legal. So those children, the apparatus that you have to have in that little playground needs to be physically mounted to the ground. So when, it, a lot of people are very, very generous, and they drop off some nice yard toys that they have and so forth for the school. However, those toys, we can't use, because if a little kid crawls up on that, and I'm just gonna talk about one of those little slides that's this big, that comes off the ground. If a little child gets up on that and that slide kicks out from underneath them, and they get hurt, then we're liable for it. So we've actually had a professional come in and assess our playground and tell us the things we need to do to make it, uh, safe. So my, the twenty-five thousand dollars that I'm requesting is, is purely for handicap accessibility out into that space.
Um, there was a, if you could follow up on the Fort River doors?
Oh, I will, okay. So, on the Fort River doors, one of the things we've had, year over year, if you look back, I kept requesting eight thousand five hundred or fifteen thousand dollars to replace doors. At the Fort River School, uh, we have gotten this money for, I'm gonna say, the last four years or so, and we have replaced several doors. On the back of the buildings, the, the particular doors that, uh, need to be replaced now are, there's two main, main quarter doors in the back of the building. And they're double-wide doors. Those doors are not energy efficient, and they're, what happened with all the doors is their, their casings have been, um, deteriorating and rotting away. So we're gonna, my goal is, and I'll be back again for another fifteen thousand next year, to replace the last set of doors there. And one would say also that, you know, there's the talk about Wildwood and so forth. Wildwood, um, the, the school building project that we're into with the feasibility and stuff, that's two thousand and nineteen. So although, um, you know, it's money we gotta spend now to fix those doors. And the other thing that we have to be careful with those doors is the older-fashioned doors used to be able to be overlapped, so you could open the door and overlap it, and that causes a security, uh, concern of ours. So now, all of the doors we put in, generally we put in what we call a, a mullion. It's in the middle of the door, where the door's closed to the mullion. And that way, uh, people can't, like, overlap it. Now, can somebody put a stone in it? Yep. Can they put a block of wood in it? Yes, they can. But in just normal use, they can't just overlap it and then sneak in and or out and/or leave it open such that somebody could, uh, get into the school.
Thank you. Um, we're open to general discussion on Article fourteen before we come to a vote. I hear a point of order.
Jim Oldham, Precinct Five. I believe there's an additional hundred and forty thousand dollars in this, um, motion that, that isn't included on the, that page fifty-four of the Finance Committee. It is on page ten, I believe, of the Capital Plan, and I'm wondering if the moderator wants to invite opportunities to speak to, to the items found in that list.
Could we get the main motion back up on the screen, by the way? Yes, that is fine, 'cause it doesn't appear as a line item, but it definitely is another chunk of money. So yes, any specific questions about the additional hundred and forty thousand? And yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Oldham, Precinct Five. The, the question is regarding signage, again. So there's, uh, a very small item, just ten thousand dollars for, for, um, I believe it's for a consultant. I think that's what I read in the newspaper. Someone say no. The town's working with the BID and the Chamber of Commerce on a new downtown sign system. This is a match for a state grant to create a signage system. I thought I had read in the paper that, but irrespective of whether I remember right or not, I, I believe it's just developing a plan for a signage system, so I have two questions. One is, it seems to me we spent some money, we appropriated some money some years ago, maybe in the last decade, and have signs downtown, and I'm curious how, how frequently a town needs to do this, and, and perhaps more importantly, uh, does anyone have any guesses as, you know, what this ten thousand dollar expenditure, uh, might lead to in terms of a plan for future expenditures on what we've now learned is a very expensive, uh, thing, buying lots of signs?
Yes, um, stand up and wave for a microphone.
Paige Wilder, Precinct Ten. I just don't know what we're talking about. Can you clarify what number we're looking at and where?
Okay. So what we're talking about in general terms, if you look at the Finance Committee Report on page fifty-four, it talks about, um, building repairs and additional hundred and forty thousand dollars for a range of maintenance and/or facility improvements. That's what we're talking about. Mr. Oldham, if you could clarify the page that you were referring to that gave details on that, that would be helpful.
So page fifty-four of the Finance Committee just lists five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars worth of expenditures. Page ten of the Joint Capital Plan Report has an additional table, uh, that lists, uh, the item I called attention to and six other items. One of them isn't, is Chapter Ninety money, but the rest, uh, add up to a hundred and forty thousand dollars of, that we're appropriating now.
Thank you. So the Joint Capital Planning Committee issued a report, which you got in a packet, and page ten has these details. Any, yes, Mr. Poehler?
I could just also say that in the table of items, it's line two sixty on the JCPC report. That's where it's, the dollar amount is listed.
Thank you. Yes, way over against the wall there.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Burseth, Precinct Six. A member of LSSE Commission. I just wanna, uh, speak a little to the, to the golf course, um, issue. Just wanna, um, remind people that the golf course is not just used by, um, what we call ball golfers. There are, um, some disc golf, um, tournaments that have been there over the years and, and are still being worked on for this year. In the winter, uh, the course is used for some skiing programs. People can cross-country ski there and do. People throughout the year also walk and use their dogs. I'd also ask the town, um, town members here and the town as a whole to, to think of, when you go to many state parks, to just walk in the state park, you have to pay a fee. We do not charge a fee to use all our conservation areas that we've paid for. So, uh, think of us as, we're, we're collecting a pretty reasonable fee for people to hit a little ball and walk on this open space. Thank you.
Further discussion before a vote. Yes, right there in the front row.
Thank you, Jerry Weiss, Precinct Eight, uh, and Chair of the Disability Access Advisory Committee. And on behalf of the committee, uh, I would like to thank you for, uh, doing the improvements on the Crocker Farm preschool playground. As you know, uh, the playgrounds are one of our, on, on our top-ten hit list of, uh, needs, so I wanna thank you publicly for that. And while, um, I'm here, uh, I'd like to make a request about Munson Library. The handicap parking space in front of the library empties out onto the sidewalk, so in effect, the sidewalk becomes the striped space for a van. That sidewalk is very narrow, uh, due to the shrubbery. Uh, people in vans move out of their van into the shrubs. Anything you could do to fix that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Further discussion before a vote. Yes, in the green right there.
Thanks, Janet Keller, Precinct One. So, um, I'm not getting up so I can read from my book. I see on page eleven of the Joint, uh, Capital Planning Committee's report, um, a little paragraph that's headed "Key Capital Planning Issues Going Forward", and it notes that, um, because we have a low debt level compared to that of other communities that also have high, uh, bond ratings, which is desirable, that we might want to look at financing, uh, some of these larger projects that people have been talking about, um, uh, for future years while, strike while the, the, while Janet Yellen hasn't raised the, the, uh, rates yet, take advantage of that. And I wonder, I, I, I would like to just invite a little bit of elaboration on that, if you might, um, what we might consider doing. Thank you.
I will allow a little elaboration, but I will not entertain a debate or conversation beyond that, because I wanna focus on this article. So if anyone cares to elaborate, Mr. Poehler?
Uh, yes, it is a good point that in these low-interest years in which we're living, trying to borrow for, uh, big capital projects when we can, I think it's a good strategy. And in fact, I would point to the borrowing we did for road repairs a couple of years ago as a, a good example of doing that when we were able to. For the projects that are listed there, um, both financially and legally, it's too early to borrow until we know exactly what we're gonna borrow the money for. We can't borrow the money and sort of park it until, you know, we're ready. There are a bunch of rules about that, so I, suffice it to say, uh, we are undergoing studies, specific studies in DPW and Wildwood and the library right now, and I think the sooner we get final project scope and cost on those, the better, so that we can take advantage of the low rates.
Further discussion on Article fourteen. Um, yes, right in the aisle here. Wait for the microphone, please, and identify yourself.
Faith Turner, Precinct Six. This is another signage question. Did we vote those four huge signs in the middle of town of four different students that are almost life-size? On Main Street?
Anybody? I guess nobody knows. Do we know, um, maybe, I don't know, do you know what she's referring to? 'Cause I don't. I'm trying to elaborate a little more.
They're in front of Town Hall, and they're... I'm, I'm just wondering how those suddenly appear in the middle.
I guess, it's, it's not on this article. I think you can probably send an email to Town Hall and ask them, but let's not try and figure it out here. It's not part of this budget. Anything else on Article fourteen? Are we ready to come to a vote? I see no hands. We will vote on the motion before us. This requires a majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion on the screen, please say aye. If opposed, please say no. The ayes have it, I hear unanimous vote. We now move on to Article fifteen. Let's get the article on the screen. And I call on Mr. Slaughter to make a motion.
I move in terms of the article.
I hear a second. You may speak to your motion.
So speaking of borrowing, that's what we're looking to do right here in Article fifteen. There are two capital items listed there. One is for, uh, breathing apparatus equipment for the fire department, and the other is for, uh, communication center equipment. So a couple of years ago, there was a, a federal mandate that changed the radio requirements that our police and fire use, and we spent a fair amount of capital money on that. This is actually in the call center itself. The equipment that they use, the computers that they use are specialized in their function and form, and they are at the end of their useful life. If you're a, a techie, they run Windows XP, which is, I believe, if not, out of, uh, service will be very, very shortly, so they're no longer able to get support for the operating system. So that's the, uh, the hundred and ten thousand dollar, uh, radio equipment in the communications center is actually very specialized equipment that's used by our nine-one-one service to, to answer the calls when you call nine-one-one and, and dispatch those calls. For the fire, the three hundred and six thousand dollars, uh, anytime the, the fire department shows up at your house under the, uh, uh, need to do fire protection, they will be wearing this equipment. So anytime they enter a home that they think there's a fire or an issue with, uh, with, uh, the air quality, they're gonna be geared up in this stuff. The current equipment that they have is, I believe, about ten years old. I'm not a hundred percent certain on that. It's bigger and heavier, so the new stuff is lighter and carries more air capacity in a smaller amount of space. It's not as heavy as the existing stuff, uh, but the more important point is the existing equipment they have is reaching the end of its useful life, and I hope that none of us ever need them to use it in our homes. But nonetheless, they've got it if they do need it. The Select Board and Joint Capital Planning Committees both recommend this article to you.
Thank you. Mr. Braun for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee unanimously supported this article, and, um, as a member of the JCPC myself, I just wanna note that the fire chief, in part of his presentation on this, on the, um, breathing apparatus, actually came to committee with the actual apparat, apparatuses, old and new, and, um, when you actually see these things up front, um, I don't think there's anybody here who would want not to use the new apparatus if you saw the differences between them, so. Anyway, we recommend it strongly.
Thank you, and we've already heard from Mr. Slaughter about the Select Board position. This requires a two-thirds vote, 'cause we are authorizing a borrowing. Is there discussion before we come to a vote? I see a hand way in the back there.
Rita Burke, Precinct Two. And I'm just curious about the, um, the radio system for the communications center. I am not arguing whether or not it's needed, although a new one was installed in two thousand and eight, and that same system is currently still being sold and installed by Motorola, the vendor for the Amherst piece up. What I'm curious about is where the money's gonna be borrowed from, and I ask that because, as of two thousand and eight, a bill that was passed in the Senate in Boston requires that every nine-one-one center in the state be allotted a certain amount of money every year to support it, and that support can be in the way of personnel expenses, overtime, training, equipment. It is a reimbursement grant. I know that Amherst nine-one-one has been allocated over five hundred thousand dollars from the state since two thousand and eight. And again, that's by a formula, and it's required by law. It's renewable every year until the law is changed. And that comes not from state tax dollars, but actually from the surcharges on your, um, phone bills, whether they be hard-line phones or wireless. So what I'm curious about is, since it is a reimbursement grant, are you borrowing, how is the money being borrowed, and are you planning to repay it by putting in your receipts and getting the money back from the amount of money that is currently available just in this fiscal year, or FY sixteen, actually, from the state? Because I believe it's in excess of ninety thousand dollars. I realize that we pay for a position, according to the, um, the budget book, in the neighborhood of thirty-five thousand dollars a year from these reimbursement grants and perhaps some of the training, but that still doesn't add up to over five hundred thousand in the last six or seven years. So I'm curious where the money's gonna be borrowed from and how it's gonna be paid back. Thank you.
Mr. Poehler?
So this will be borrowing from the general fund, um, and so it'll be paid back with tax dollars. I'm not aware that, um, the particular equipment we are buying is eligible for those grants or that those grants are already spoken for, um, but, uh, so when the police department came to us about this, they are very good about letting us know when grant money is and is not available. They did not say that this was... They did not say that this was an eligible expense, and I take them at their word. And so this will be paid back with tax dollars.
Further discussion before a vote? Yes, go ahead. Get back row there.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up, Rita Burke, Precinct 2. Rita Burke, right? Is that what it's supposed to be? Precinct 2. All the information relative to these reimbursement grants can be found online at the state 911 website. And I'm not going to argue whether or not it's eligible. I believe it is from what I've read. But just to clarify something that Mr. Slaughter said before, and it's a very complicated system that the 911 center uses, and it's a very important system. But there is a difference between answering phone calls and dispatching over the radio and using many other systems they have to use, including what's called the CAD system or computer aided dispatch. They're all separate, somewhat equal. But the phone system is installed and paid for and maintained by the state, irregardless of anything else that the 911 center does. So not to be confused with the different systems. We're talking strictly about radio dispatch with regards to this request that, as far as I can read it. Thank you.
Is there further discussion on Article 15? Yes, back in the aisle there.
Yeah. Lee O'Malley, Precinct 5. I may have just gotten confused about something, and probably my fault. I thought I heard in response to the question the finance director saying that the money would be borrowed from the general fund. I may have misheard. And if he did say that, then why does the article say, quote, "to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore"? I may have just misheard.
Mr. Poehler?
So just to be clear, this is a general obligation of the town. That is the general fund as opposed to the water fund or the sewer fund. So we are borrowing the money from people who buy our bonds, and we will pay it back with general fund revenue, which is basically your tax dollars.
Further discussion on Article 15? I see no hands. We will come to a vote. Again, this requires a two-thirds. All those in favor of the motion in terms of the article under Article 15, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Moderator, here's two-thirds. We now move on to Article 16, and I ask for Mr. Slaughter to make a motion.
I move in terms of the article.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to your motion.
So this is a circumstance where a project came in under budget, but we borrowed money to do it. So we're going to try to repurpose that borrowing. So a couple of years ago, we borrowed some money to do a project, I believe at Fort River School. That project came in a little bit under the borrowed amount, and so we can reuse that borrowed money for another purpose, but it has to be a similar purpose. We were going to use that at Wildwood for a boiler project there. But instead, we did a feasibility study. But this borrowing needs to be, couldn't be used for that purpose, and so we're going to now use it to work on the roof at the barn that sits in front of Fort River School. And so this amount of $17,878.98 will help fund the project to replace the roof on the barn. If you've ever gone to Fort River School, when you pull in and before you turn and see the school proper, on your left is a large white barn where we store tires and replacement equipment and things of that sort. So the Joint Capital Planning Committee and the Select Board both recommend this to you.
Thank you. Mr. Braun for the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee voted 6 to 0 with 1 absent to support this article.
Thank you. This vote requirement is only a majority because we've already got the money. We're just moving it to a new place. Any discussion before we come to a vote on Article 16? Yes, I see a hand back there.
Pat Church, Precinct 5. It sounded, from the way you spoke about it, as though this is part of the money it's going to take to do it. I'm not clear about that. And if you have an estimate on what it's going to take, I'm just, would like to know that. Because I want to know where the other money is coming from.
Mr. Slaughter?
So, and I hope Mr. Poehler corrects me if I'm incorrect. But yes, this, the roofing project, I believe, is $70,000 in total. This is a portion of that. The remainder of it comes from the taxation that we voted in Article... I think 14. If not, it was 13.
Is there further discussion on Article 16? Yes, a hand sent her back there.
Paige Wilder, Precinct 10. I thought that it was said that the boiler project came in under budget, but it looks like it, well, nothing was spent, so that it wasn't done at all. Is that the case? And I'm also curious, there was some discussion the other night with the school budget, that there's a possibility we close Fort River School. And if you look in the next three years in the Fort River School capital budget, there's well over $1 million going into Fort River School. So I'd like town meeting members to begin thinking about what Fort River might be repurposed toward.
Mr. Slaughter?
So there were, the money that we're moving right now was originally purposed for a boiler at Fort River. And that project, first Fort River, then Wildwood. And when we didn't do the second one, then we still had this small amount of money that was available and already borrowed. So it's kind of a two-step process. Both were boilers that we originally intended it for. One we actually put in place, one we didn't, in lieu of doing something else. And I think that, to your point regarding Fort River School, regardless of the process which is going on now and will be continuing to go on over the next several months, and with regard to Wildwood and what happens with that project, Fort River is an asset of the town. We own that building. We should maintain it regardless of whether it ends up being used for school or if it stays a school or it finds some other useful and lovely purpose.
Further discussion on Article 16? Yes, all the way in the back there.
Tracy Lee Butilier, Precinct 6. To follow up on the previous question, it was just said that the money that we had put aside or approved for Wildwood boiler replacement, when that decision was made not to replace the boiler, can you please tell us what the money was repurposed to be used for?
Mr. Slaughter?
So it was used to fund the feasibility study instead. So instead of replacing a boiler and then putting this money with that larger block of money, we just took the block of money that we were originally going to dedicate to the boiler at Wildwood and dedicated that to the feasibility study. But because we had already borrowed this for a particular purpose, we have to use this for a similar type of purpose. Whereas with the feasibility study that we opted to do instead of a boiler at Wildwood, that was a different bond authorization that we were going to go through for that, for a different purpose. And so those are distinct in that regard.
Thank you. Further discussion before we come to a vote? Yes, I see a hand back there still.
Tracy Lee Butilier, Precinct 6. I'm sorry, that was just a little bit confusing. So were there two feasibility studies that were done at Wildwood? Or was this the same feasibility study that we approved money for last town meeting?
Mr. Slaughter?
So, there was only one feasibility study. So when joint capital planning process was a, well, let me not confuse the issue anymore. Just one feasibility study that we approved last time. We had, in coming into that, we were originally thinking we were, we had not found out about the ability to do the feasibility study from the state. And so before we knew that, we were thinking about replacing the boiler at Wildwood. And so we had gone through the process of capital planning around that boiler. When the feasibility study became an option for us, we chose that option instead of a boiler. And so that's the distinction there. And that's really, that chunk of money is all entirely separate from this particular article and its repurposment. This money was, was to be repurposed for the Wildwood boiler that we didn't end up doing. So we now have borrowed it. We can use it for another similar purpose, and that's the intent of this article.
Further discussion before we come to a vote? Yes, I see a hand all the way in the back there.
Felicity Callahan, Precinct 9. What is the meaning of the sentence in this Finance Committee booklet? These funds are available as unspent funds from a previously approved project to repair Town Hall.
Mr. Poehler?
These monies have a long history. So originally, we borrowed money back sometime after 1889 to repair Town Hall. That project was done, and there were $17,000 left over from that. So we had to figure out, what are we going to do with that $17,000? And along came the Wildwood boiler. That was going to cost $400,000. So we said, well, let's borrow $400,000 to repair the boiler, except we noticed, wait a minute, we still have $17,000 left over from Town Hall. So instead of deciding to borrow $400,000, we're going to borrow $400,000 less $17,000 to repair the boiler. We're all set. Except then the boiler didn't get done. Instead, we borrowed a full $400,000 for the feasibility study. We could not use the $17,000 that we were going to use for the boiler for the feasibility study because, as Mr. Slaughter said, there are rules about the kind of money you can, kind of project you can repurpose money for. So we had to find another construction project. Ah-ha, along came the barn. So now, the $70,000 barn project is going to be paid for, some with JCPC regular tax revenue, and $17,000 of the Town Hall money that is finally finding a home in the barn.
Thank you. Yes, I see a hand way over there. Before, just a quick reality check. Did anybody else have any hand raised? Yes, they did. So we're going to do, motion for the previous question has been made. So we, and seconded, we will now come to an immediate vote. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we will then come to a vote on Article 16, which also requires two-thirds. Everybody with me? All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's two-thirds. I also heard a point of order. I'm sorry, let's do the point of order first. But, microphone, please.
Amy Middleman, Precinct 5. Was the person who called the previous question actually recognized?
Yes, he was. Yes, I pointed to him and recognized him. Yes. I heard two-thirds, but we can do it again just to make sure. So please use your normal tone of voice. Don't scream or yell. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's two-thirds. We will now come to a vote on Article 16 debt repurpose, which in addition, which also requires a two-thirds vote. All... Oh, I'm sorry, it's a majority vote because we've already borrowed the money. Okay, so this requires a majority vote, in case you hadn't been paying attention. All those in favor of the motion under Article 16, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We now move on to Article 17, and I call on Ms. Streeter to make a motion.
Mary Streeter, Precinct 8, and Chair of the Community Preservation Act Committee. I move in terms of the article, except in the amount, part A of the article, except in the amount of $414,101.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to your motion.
Okay, Bill, could I have the PowerPoint up? As most people know, Community Preservation Act funds can be only spent on four categories. So money spent in this area couldn't help us on the operating budget or JCPC budget or anything else like that. As you can see, the four categories are community housing, open space, recreation, and historical preservation. We received a request from the new Amherst Affordable Housing Trust for some funds that will help them start up. Whenever you're purchasing land, you need to do surveys and appraisals. They also need some professional help to set up the trust. We have another trust in town, the Amherst Community Land Trust. And they have been busy, although they're fairly new. They have come forward with a proposal to purchase a three-quarter acre parcel off of North Pleasant Street in North Amherst. We often like to leverage CPA funds with additional funds. So we usually encourage people to go out and get further grants, private or state grants. And so the ACLT folks went out when they first came to us with a proposal for about $115,000, but they were able...
Mr. Streeter, I'm going to interrupt because, I don't know if you know it or not, but you're kind of in slideshow mode there, and it's just going crazy.
Thank you. What do I do to stop it?
It's all sad.
Oh, okay. This is the parcel in North Amherst. It is now owned by the North Amherst Community Farm. And you probably know the area because there's a simple Gifts Farm sign there. So they went out and got $20,000 grant from Interfaith Housing to help with the purchase of the land. So this particular project will not only bring us two units of affordable housing that will be built by Habitat for Humanity. There's a memorandum of understanding in place now. The units will be owner-occupied. Our next project is to hire a consultant for the fountain in Switzer Park.
There it goes again. Can you control the slides? So just say next.
Can you do it from there?
Yeah. Good, just say next slide, and he'll take care of it.
All right, next? Okay, that's it. They need someone with some expertise in stonework to fix the fountain because it is deteriorating.
It just went again.
I didn't touch anything. Okay, I'm going to go quickly, and if people have questions, we can go back to some of these. I don't know what's going on. I'm not... Great, because I didn't touch anything. Yeah. Let's see who else believes me. Okay. Next, we have a proposal. This is 5,000 less than what's in your warrant for an archaeological study at the Strong House. The Amherst History Museum is one of Amherst's treasures, and some people refer to it as Amherst Attic. UMass Architectural Services will do the testing. And that amount was originally $25,000, but it's been reduced. I think the bid came in a little less. The other Strong House proposal is for painting, to scrape, caulk, and paint the entire building, replace deteriorated glazing around the windows, and use historically appropriate colors. And we don't know the color yet. Next. The Goodman Memorial AME Zion Church would like to have a capital assessment to see what needs to be done at the church. They also would like to do an archaeological study. And these archaeological studies, we haven't voted these before, but it's now considered a best practice for any outside building work that goes on. Next. Let's see. Okay. And there's a map up there that you can see where the Goodman Church is. It's off of Woodside Avenue, off of Route 9, on the way to Hadley. Next. We've come to you many times in the past for open space surveys and appraisals. This is due diligence. It's important when we purchase land. And here we are again with a request for $25,000. Next. Okay, so far, our... Oops, I'm not ready. Whoops, I'm not ready. In North Amherst, there's a field that I used to think of as a baseball field. Apparently, people who've been here longer know it as the cow field. It's just north of North Amherst School. And what they would like to do is make it a multipurpose field and not a baseball field. But there are some safety issues, because there's limited parking, often used by workers at the North Amherst School. So, what they'd like to do is put a traprock gravel parking area at the north end, and to install a safety fence and a movable basketball cage, movable baseball cage, for when baseball is played there. Backstop, I think, not a cage. And our next project is from Mill River. Amherst Baseball, Inc. is quite an active organization. They've done a lot of work to help our various farm, various sports areas, and they do a lot of sweat equity. But they would like to really do a good job of redoing the two baseball fields at Mill River. And the last project for right now is to... No, actually, I think I'm done. Next?
Just got administrative expenses.
Oh, yeah. Administrative expenses, which, that's our dues to the Community Preservation Coalition, which, if you want to learn more about CPA, that's an excellent website to go to, and the people are very helpful to us on the phone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I call on, I believe, Ms. Ratner for the Finance Committee.
Yes, thank you. The Finance Committee recommends this article by the vote of six to zero with one absent. It is an appropriate use of CPA funds.
Thank you. And Mr. Steinberg for the Select Board.
Yes, the Select Board voted unanimously to support the motion in the article. And our support is for each of the projects which we reviewed, as well as for the subtotal. But rather than talk about projects individually now, which I think have been very well presented by Ms. Streeter, if questions come up during discussion, either I or another member of the Select Board may ask to be recognized to talk about that, but we won't guess at what might come up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Article 17A requires a majority vote. At this point in time, Ms. Perot has asked to make a motion to divide. Is that still the case? And I don't see where you are. Okay, microphone, please.
Melissa Perot, Precinct 1. I would like to divide number eight concerning the field in the Village Center.
So, a motion is made to divide number eight, and it's an acceptable motion, it's not debatable. So, this means we're going to first have a discussion on items one through seven and nine through 10, and come to a vote on them, all majority vote. And then, when we're all done with that, we will have a separate discussion on item eight and come to a vote on that. The way we're going to handle this discussion is, there's going to be a speaker for each of the sections, who'll be recognized and have three minutes to speak. In some cases, speak, additional speakers have all requested in advance to be recognized. And any motions to increase amounts are not in order. At the end of debate, we will vote on, as I said, Articles one through seven, plus nine and 10, and then we'll come back to item eight after that. So, we begin by asking Peter Jessup to speak on the Affordable Housing section.
Thank you. I'm Peter Jessup, and a member of the Community Preservation Act Committee. First, I want to thank Mary for her leadership on the committee. She's taken over as Chair, and we are deeply appreciative of the effort she's made to keep us on track. I'm actually not going to elaborate much on the first item, which is the Affordable Housing Trust. Town Meeting approved the establishment of that trust last year, and they, through the Housing and Sheltering Committee, they came to us asking for $50,000. And after a back-and-forth discussion about where they were at in their process, we all agreed that a $25,000 recommendation to Town Meeting would be somewhat more in line. They are just getting started. They've had their first meeting or meetings, and the trust is, the trustees have been established by the town. They're beginning to meet. They're charged with the purpose of creating and preserving affordable housing for the benefit of low and moderate income households in the town of Amherst. They intend to use this for due diligence, and as well as some legal work that needs to be done to establish the Declaration of Trust, and to have a professional assist them with the establishment of their trust action plan, so they can establish a method of accomplishing their goals going forward.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on either items one or two?
Actually, I do want to say something about item two, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure, yes.
Okay. For that, I'd like to cede the rest of my time, if I could, to Janet Keller, Town Meeting member. She can actually speak to this probably more eloquently than I can.
Okay. And actually, instead of doing that, I'll recognize Ms. Keller for a full three minutes. She had asked me in advance to be recognized, I was going to do that.
There are four groups supporting this...
Why don't you identify yourself, even though he already...
Oh, sure. I'm Janet Keller, Precinct 1. There are four groups supporting this project, the Amherst Community Land Trust, Interfaith Housing, North Amherst Community Farm, which is the home of Simple Gifts Farm, and Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity. We're very excited to be working together on a project that has so many benefits. It's a terrific location for a new owner-occupied, low-income housing that would be affordable, and I'd really like to underscore this, for a family of four making up to $43,750 a year. So, it's low-income housing, not low-moderate, but low. It's, it is a terrific location. It's next door to the farm. It's on a frequently traveled bus route. And we'll take a minute here to point out where we're talking about...
And it also appears to be upside down.
Oh.
There we go.
There we go. I don't know how I'm going to do this. Okay. Can we focus it better? Not I, said the little red hen. I'm afraid the red hen is also unable.
Which button?
Yeah, adjust the clock when she starts again.
Got it. Keep going. Is that doing anything? Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think people get the general gist of what we're looking at. I think it's okay. But you can't talk, you can't talk when you're up there, you need a microphone.
Okay. So...
Good. Try not to blind Mr. Jessup now.
If you would point out where Puffton Village is, I think it's right opposite, not, up, 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 right opposite the farm.
This is the farm here at Puffton?
Village there, and then north Meadow Street up there, Pine Street, Hobart Lane. So, we're going to have some great new neighbors in that neighborhood. And this is just a little bigger map to point it out, thanks. So, it's next door to the farm, it's on a frequent bus route, it's an easy walk to the post office, the library, UMass, and shopping. So, having our groups work together, we feel is a way for us to build and fund and steward these, this project, and it gives us a terrific opportunity to magnify the benefit that any one of us could have brought to the table alone. So, we hope you'll say yes to our project. Thanks.
Any further discussion on the Affordable Housing section? I see no hands. I now call on Mr.... Did I see a hand? Yes, I see a hand on the aisle there.
I have a question. The first one is...
Why don't you identify yourself, please?
Oh, Hilda Greenbaum, Precinct 1. Will there be a local preference for the people who will occupy this building? Are we allowed to do that with Habitat? And the second question is, are you also subsidizing the mortgage? Because I find it hard that people making $40,000 are going to be approved by the banks.
Mr. Jessup.
I'm Peter Jessup, and I've been a longtime supporter, volunteer, and past board member of Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity. In fact, we would not have local preference. It's essentially a, it's an open process by which we choose our homeowners. And so, the second part of the question is a good one. And the way Habitat works is, they provide no interest mortgages to the homeowners. So, you take the cost of building the house divided by 20 years, divided by 12 months, and that becomes the payment for the homeowner. So, there's no bank involved, there's no bank financing. Financing is all done by Habitat.
Thank you. Further questions on affordable housing? Yes, right there in the center.
Hi, Marcy Salo, Precinct 3. I'm in a butter of the farm and a former board member of North Amherst Community Farm, and I just want to connect the dots a little bit. I think we're doing a double-good thing here by approving this sale to Amherst Community Land Trust, because the $100-plus thousand that's going to be gained is going to help pay down the mortgage on our community farm, which, there's some confusion sometimes about whether, what the difference is between North Amherst Community Farm and Simple Gifts Farm. Simple Gifts Farm is the for-profit less C of the not-for-profit North Amherst Community Farm. And what our purpose is, is to keep that land affordable for farming in perpetuity. So, with this $100,000, we are reducing our debt to the point of the original $1.19 million debt, down to remaining only $100,000 left to pay off the mortgage on the farm. And that's something we all should be really proud of, and that we should work to continue the momentum on, and keep farming affordable in our town, as well as housing. Thank you.
Further discussion on the affordable housing items? Yes, I see a hand, fourth row back in the aisle.
Mary Oren, Precinct 5. I'm wondering about the Habitat for Humanity family that is selected for one of these units. After the 20-year mortgage is paid off, do they, does the family then own that building unrestricted and could sell it, or is it some kind of a special deal?
Sure, I can answer that question. Peter Jessup, at the end of the 20 years, just like regular homeowners that have paid off their mortgage, the family will own the house. There is, however, a deed restriction placed by the town in language suitable to the town and legal entities to maintain that property as affordable in perpetuity. So, while the owner does own the property by the Amherst Community Land Trust and other entities involved in it, it's an ironclad deal. That property will remain affordable in perpetuity, but the homeowners, after 20 years, they in fact do own the, own the house and pay property taxes on it, just like the rest of
Okay, we're going to move on to Historic Preservation. Any questions? Oh, sorry, first, I call on Mr. Wald. Okay, kind of a point of order. Grab, wait for the microphone, stand up, please.
Paige Wilder, Precinct 10. I'm treasurer of the land trust, and I just wanted to point out something that Peter left out.
Um, sorry, that's not a point of order.
What he said before we move on?
No, maybe at the end, if we open to general discussion...
Get it.
I'll see who wants to be recognized. Mr. Wald, tell us about Historic Preservation.
Actually, Mr. Hanke is the Chair of the Historical Commission, will do that, it's just that he was, he was unable to come Monday night, but I can answer questions about the Historical Society to the extent they arise. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Hanke? And you're a registered voter in the town of Amherst?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes to talk about the Historical Preservation items.
Michael Hanke, Chair of the Local Historical Commission, or the Amherst Historical Commission. Can I use this device here?
Um, I think so.
Overhead?
Overhead, yes.
It'd be helpful, wouldn't it? At least you can read it. I'm only thankful I'm not talking about the Wildwood Boiler, but I'm talking about the, firstly, I'm going to talk about something I've talked about before, some of the same characters, Enos Cook and Luke Sweetser. And for years, as a designer, I wondered why I love Sweetser Park so much, why it feels so good, why people like to be there. And that mystery was solved tonight. Jonathan Tucker leaned over and said, that's a Frederick Law Olmsted design. And yes, he was here, he was old at the time, but he designed that park, and it's a wonderful place. Now, this fountain is in trouble. Here it is, recently. People enjoy this fountain a great deal. You could see some of the graffiti, but the bigger problem is right here. This is typical all the way around the fountain. It was restored in 1994. Originally, Enos Cook paid for this fountain to be placed on land donated by the Sweetser children. It needs some work. So, essentially, what we're looking for here is money to do a study, prepare bid documents, and build a cover. You're familiar with the green cover that sits on top of it for most of the winter that needs to be rebuilt. And then, the money to actually restore the fountain comes from a gift that belongs to the Sweetser Park. The next item I'm talking about is the Strong House, and you can see it here, well, sort This is really, the first thing I'd like to talk about is the painting. You could see that it, it does really need some work. This is one of the oldest houses in Amherst. It's important to Amherst. You've all seen it, and this is a no-brainer. The other request from the Strong House is to do an archaeological survey of the site. It's one of the earliest houses in Amherst. It was once part of a large farm, and every time you put in a walkway, plant a tree, put a shrub in, do some garden work, you may be disturbing archaeological evidence that exists under the ground. This is part of good stewardship. They've already done this kind of study on the house, now they want to do it for the grounds. And last but not least, this wonderful little chapel. And this is the AME Zion Church. And why is it wonderful? Well, it's wonderful. How many New England churches have you seen that are this modest? It's unique for many reasons, but one is that it's a modest structure. The cross on the top is a couple of two-by-fours nailed together. And it's, I think it's extraordinarily unique in the north. In the south, you see more of these churches, but up north, I've seen very few of these. They want to do due diligence to this building, they want to do a study to figure out how to get people in and out of it who are, who can't walk in the front steps. There's some issues with electrical insulation, the basement. And then, the other aspect of it, because it's a landmark structure, they want to do an archaeological survey of the grounds before they disturb anything that's there. So, I think, for that reason, it's a very important part of the historic landscape of Amherst, and we want to see this building continue to be a very vital part of that landscape. And that's, that's it.
Thanks. Any questions or discussion on items three, four, five, or six? And yes, I see hands, second row in the aisle there.
Yes, John Fox, Precinct 10. I have a question on the Cook Fountain Assessment. I think it's a great thing to fix it. So, my concern is that we seem to study about everything. And I'm wondering why, instead of studying what needs to be done, you don't have a number of contractors who are experts in these things come and evaluate what needs to be done and bid on it, and then you'll know what needs to be done without a $20,000 study. I'm sure you've thought about this, but I find that we overstudy things. I'm wondering if we could use the $20,000 primarily to help the actual restoration.
Mr. Zomek, or I'm sorry, Mr. Hanke.
I agree on some point of that. I worked on a project out in the Harbor Islands, and there were a whole shelf of studies which were never used. This is not only for a study. I guess it's, it's one of the ways to phrase... I guess it's, it's one of the ways to phrase it, but we're hiring a consultant to come in to take a look at the fountain, determine what's wrong with it, prepare a set of bid documents that then can be sent out to bid. We did have an expert come in and take a look at the fountain. Ervin Slavid, he repaired the stones in West Cemetery. He looked at the fountain and gave us a rough estimate of how much it would cost to actually prepare those documents to put it out to bid. And it's not only for the preparation of these documents, it's to replace the cover, which currently is decrepit for the fountain. I don't know exactly how much that cover will cost, but part of that $20,000 will go for the cover. And then finally, we don't know exactly how much the study will cost. That's an estimate, it may cost less. It's not a very sophisticated structure, but whoever looks at it needs to do a better job than what was done in 1994.
More discussion on 3, 4, 5, or 6? Yes, in the back corner there.
Vince O'Connor, Precinct 1. On item number four, the archaeological survey, it's my understanding that one of the purposes of this survey is to determine whether it would be feasible to move the Strong House from its current location to a different location and to then sell the part of the land to the library to provide a, an endowment for the Strong House. Now, I think this is based on some unrealistic assumptions. Mostly, the assumption that because a certain piece of land on Triangle Street was sold for three times what it was assessed for, that all small parcels in the center of town are equally valuable. I don't think that's a good assumption. And I am very concerned that what the entire purpose of this study be discussed at town meeting and that we not have a situation that we did on Main Street where there was, there was something that was known by some people and that was not discussed at town meeting that we read about in the newspaper shortly thereafter with regard to the preservation of the frontage on, on Main Street. I'm, I'm not here to advocate absolutely that this, that Article, that Section 4 is a bad idea. I just think that we have to discuss this in the open and not have some people know about it that, and not have it spoken about and have the rest of the town meeting be voting on something that they are completely unaware of, you know, where the thing is headed. So I would, I would ask that whoever knows about this and is knowledgeable, get up in front of the town meeting and explain it to us so that when we vote on Article, on Section 4, that we know exactly what we're voting on and what is going to happen.
Mr. Wald.
Do I literally have to get up or can I do it from here?
You can do it from there. Go into the microphone.
Is this better? Okay. I appreciate Mr., the previous speaker's question, and I assume, it's a little bit opaque to me, but I assume it's in reference to some reports you might have seen in the newspaper about possible plans between the Historical Society and museum on the one hand and the library on the other. And I should say I'm speaking here as the president of the Historical Society. I was also the past chair of the Historical Commission, so I think my commitment to historic preservation is well-known. I like to consider myself a fanatical but amiable preservationist. And I can assure you, we wouldn't be doing anything that wouldn't be for the best of the property as such. Couple of things. There was talk actually in the paper about a possible merger between the library and the Historical Society. That's not, and there was talk about moving the building. Those are sort of partial elements of things that have been discussed in very informal and totally hypothetical ways. What I can tell you is that both institutions wish to remain formally separate. The library is not taking over the Historical Society. The Historical Society is not voting itself out of existence. What the conversation was, and this goes back to long-range planning discussions we had back around 2008 to 2010, was that given that both institutions hold the town's historic memory and need space for collections and storage and things like that, some kind of collaboration with shared space might make sense. At one point in the conversation, there was the, someone had floated the idea of moving the building forward. As a preservation, that's the last thing I would normally want to do because it's important to keep, Mr. Hanky can tell you, to keep a building on its site and that piece of open space downtown is very important. But you know, sometimes you think outside the box. If by doing that, you can enhance the mission of the building, that you can secure the collections, you can secure attention from the museum and so forth, it's going to be considered. But it was simply that a hypothetical. And I can tell you, as a result of the last conversations we had with the library, that that is very hypothetical, 99.9% chance, nobody's moving the building. It's, you know, you want to consider all the possibilities, but there's no direct plan to move the building. It would be expensive and technologically complicated, and there are probably simpler ways to get what we want. And let me just, I'm mindful of the time, just refer you to something. When we've, we got CPA funds for a feasibility study from 2010, which were granted by the town in 2012, one of the questions we were asking for, how to preserve the integrity of the structure of the Strong House while adding addition to the rear of the building? The additional provide much-needed exhibition program and collection, storage space, and so on and so forth. So that's where the library and Historical Society conversations are. They're about some kind of shared facility within the library or a connecting building or some such thing, much to be discussed, that might, the library, the Historical Society might in fact derive some funds from sale of land. But I think this all comes with illegitimate means. Again, the archaeological study is something you do as good due diligence anyway. Dickinson and Museum did this, and the Zion Church is asking for the same thing. Thank you.
More discussion on 3, 4, 5, or 6? Yes, right there in the center.
Paige Wilder, Precinct 10. In some of the discussion about the library, expanding renovations and the feasibility study for the library, it was mentioned that the library is not leaving its location. And it's pretty clear that there is going to be some kind of renovation and likely an addition, and there's not much where else to go besides the Strong House lawn. Why isn't this part of the library feasibility money?
I guess the short answer is because it's not related. We actually had an internal discussion on the board of the Historical Society, and some people said, "We shouldn't do this unless we're merging with the library or they're going to pay for it." And I said, "No, you're a steward of your properties," Mr. Hanky said. "We take care of the building with the historic structure report referred to and historic paint study. You take care of your grounds by determining what's down there." Because this is, you know, this is in a way of enhancing the documentary record. This is old farmland in the center of town. What you find in the soil can tell you about agriculture and land use, material culture, the economy, family life. So we will be doing this anyway. It's, it may fit into other plans, but it's an independently justified action.
Yes, all the way in the back there.
Tracy Lee Bucilier, Precinct 6. I have two questions. Did I hear correctly that there could be potential sale of land? And then the other question I wanted to ask, is this, was there discussion about creation of a museum or partnering with the museum?
Mr. Wald?
Me again. All right. Sorry, the first question was about acquisition of land?
Sale.
Right. I mean, acquisition by the library. That's one possibility being, being discussed because again, there is land toward the rear or the side between the two buildings that might be suitable for an expansion. It's all very hypothetical at this point for a lot of reasons, but that's the logical thing. But it seems that any expansion would take place toward the side and rear and not toward the front, not toward that spacious open lawn. And the second question was about a merger? What's being discussed is some kind of a collaboration. Again, they would remain separate institutions, but it doesn't make sense to build two completely separate facilities that serve the same purpose for similar goals. And so we're trying to find out how we might create a facility that would serve both institutions. And that would require, of course, drafting of a memorandum of understanding and all sorts of other things that are still a ways down the road. I hope, does that answer that question?
Any other discussion on 3, 4, 5, 6? Yes, I see a hand back there.
Bonnie McCracken, Precinct 6. I'm also the treasurer of the Amherst Historical Society. One thing as a member, as a trustee that we face is that we have no visibility. We sit back from the street and we often joke that most of the people passing by must think some 90-year-old lady lives there and she doesn't take care of her house. People don't know that we exist. So if we do not move our house, then we need to enhance it in some way, either through another garden, a better walkway, or better lighting. And we can't do that unless we do this archaeological study so that we know what is there before we can move forward. And we are just trying to be good stewards of our land. We are a nonprofit organization. We are not a town-owned property. And we work hard to not only keep the collection for the town, but to keep our building in good repair and our budget funded. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to open space, and I will open up to general discussion, but I want to get all the sections covered at least a little bit first. So Paris Bois, I believe, is going to be talking about the open space section. And are you a registered voter in Amherst?
I am a registered voter in Amherst, yes.
Excellent. Introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Paris Bois. I'm on the Conservation Commission and also on the Community Preservation Act Committee. And this first part, so this is still 17A, so we're just talking about the surveys, appraisals, and related studies. The Conservation Commission and Community Preservation Act Committee both unanimously recommended these monies for the surveys, appraisals, and related studies that we use every year.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions on item 7? I see no hands. We're skipping over eight, but we're talking about nine, and I call on Mr. Brissette to do a little presentation on that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jim Brissette, Precinct 6. Member of the LSSE Commission and the LSSE representative to the CPA Committee. I just want to thank the town for previous support of recreation items. That is a much-needed funding. And I know people sometimes don't realize this, but when you support affordable housing, you are also, in a sense, bringing children into homes. And this money is very helpful to those children to allow them to have safe, healthy places to play organized sports and, and sports on their own. The fields that we're talking about are, you know, open to everyone after they're, you know, once they're not scheduled. So I just wanted to show this, this amount to just show that in past years, the funding for recreation has lagged, which means our funding for children, basically children's health, has lagged. This particular item is for the north, for the Amherst Baseball, Inc., which runs the baseball program that relies on the Mill River Fields. The CPA Committee voted six in favor, no opposition, and one abstention. The LSSE voted this unanimously, and you heard from the Select Board and Finance Committee that they both supported this. This organization provides low-cost baseball. The fields at Mill River are in great need of fundamental renovation, including safe dugouts, which, you know, are not, you know, sort of just a nice little aesthetic thing for a mini Fenway Park. These are, these are structures that provide protection from the sun, protection from fly balls. It's also a way to keep, these are young kids, you know, very physically active, to keep them in one place when they're, they're not actively on the field. You know, baseball, there's bats and balls. Can be dangerous if kids are running random. So the dugouts serve a specific safety function and a team function. I also want to say that I think it's important to think of the money we spend on recreation, particularly these fields, is we do get tangible, physical improvements to the field, but we also get so much more. The kids who play sports, they benefit from so many ways, as far as the skills they develop for teamwork and all sorts of things that also lead to better performance in school, less problems in school, and so on. So I urge you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few people who've asked me to recognize, so we're going to, I'm going to recognize them now and then open up number nine to discussion. So first, Nate Buddington. If you're here, yes. Step forward, and Mr. Buddington is a registered voter in Amherst. Introduce yourself, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Nate Buddington, I'm president of Amherst Baseball. And I want to tell you a little bit about what we confront at Mill River as an organization. We have probably the most degraded, one of the most degraded Little League facilities in the Pioneer Valley, if not in Western Mass. And those of us who coach have been around to a lot of different facilities with our teams, so we've seen them. And there may be some that are worse than Mill River, but there's not many. We have soils that have never really been reintroduced and switched and maintained since the creation of those fields in, I believe, the 70s. We have no protection from these blistering summers we're getting from pop-ups, and that's why we need the dugouts. Our batting cages are made of chain link and hard, heavy poles. They're dangerous. Kids hit pitched balls inside that cage and the coaches are on their own in terms of getting hit in the head by these, by these balls. So what we're really trying to do is just create a Little League field, the same kind of Little League field that exists all over the valley. Now, I know one of the issues about the dugouts is potentially, what are they going to look like? And a lot of times when you travel to Little League fields and you look at the dugouts, they look kind of like rundown wood sheds. Amherst Baseball, Inc., which is the organization that I represent, has engaged a local architect who is going to design dugouts for us. And we gave them three charges. One, they need to be low-cost. Number two, they need to look really good. And three, they need to have some sense of being sort of opaque so they don't wind up being these enclosed shells that in the offseason and at night, people can do bad things in them. They may still, but it's going to be a little hard to do it in secrecy. So we think what we're going to have when we're done with those dugouts are the best dugouts, best-looking dugouts and the most functional dugouts in, in Western Mass. The reason why this figure is so high, these fields need to be re-engineered. Field number two, which is the one closest to the play structure, has clay right up to the playing surface. So anytime it rains, it's flooded for days afterward. It's just not playable. And field number one is not quite as bad. They need to be taken apart, they need to have the substrata removed, they need new playing soil, they need new pitching mounds. The pitching mound on field number one isn't even aligned correctly with home plate. These fields need a tremendous amount of work just to get them up to the standard that we need for safety and for playability. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. And Melissa Perro has asked me to recognize.
Melissa Perro, Precinct 1. It is indeed good to know. There is such a dedicated group of baseball enthusiasts.
Can you pull the mic down, please?
Down. It is coming. Is that better?
No, I'm sorry.
Closer?
There you go.
Is that better?
Yes.
Thus, I support replacing the fields with engineered soils, improved batting cages, and replacement fence protectors to enhance their game and their safety. However, many people use the North Amherst Recreation Area for different activities throughout the year. Even with the extensive chain link fencing, there's a sense of open space with a view from side to side that is essentially unobstructed, allowing adults to monitor younger children from a distance. This is an important aspect of their physical and emotional growth too, and for parental peace of mind. The provision of four permanent dugout structures dotted across this space will significantly change that. And I'm sorry that... And I'm sorry that we don't have plans for these dugouts. I've looked at several online, and I am concerned about them as an obstruction. Mostly, I believe there are legitimate concerns about unintended consequences of such structures. Three-sided shelters could create an attractive nuisance and a safety hazard when supervision is lacking. That cover could, for instance, create opportunity for inappropriate or unsanitary misuse. Trash, in its broadest sense, you laugh. Thank you.
Let's not laugh. Let's not interrupt the speaker, please.
Trash, in its broadest sense, is likely to accumulate there, and the sheds, like the present batting cages, could be misinterpreted as another climbing challenge with the potential for injury to those who lack the necessary skills, or indeed for damage to the structures to themselves. And finally, the seclusion of Mill River Recreation Area has often been used by those who prefer to sleep outdoors rather than in shelter housing. Such structures would seem to encourage that in a public location. I've learned from a baseball family that the dugouts are mostly needed for protection from the debilitating effects of wind and sun on players, and with that, I sympathize absolutely. But it is my hope that the Baseball Association will consider their design with these concerns that I mentioned seriously, consider these concerns seriously, and devise shelters that could shield players from the weather during the season but not be permanent fixtures in a recreation area that is used year-round in a great variety of ways. I'm unclear as to the need for water and electric service to play baseball and suggest that water bottles serve well for drinking and that the nearby clean stream can be used to cool off. I think animal-proof recycling and trash containers, however, would benefit all. Thank you for listening and caring, and have a good season.
Angela Mills has asked to be recognized. You may come forward. And Ms. Mills is a registered voter in Amherst. So identify yourself, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Angela Mills. I am the chair of the LSSE Commission. I'm also on the board of Amherst Baseball, and I'm here tonight as a mother to thank the CPAC for their wonderful procedures. And I've learned a great deal as part of the LSSE Commission and also going through the CPAC process and sitting in on those hearings. Tonight, I ask you to help our kids and our families and also help maintain this multi-generational park that we have. It is such a wonderful blessing to have Mill River. And as a coach, I helped with the Giants, a Little League team. It would be wonderful to have a field on which our kids are safe, where they have good hops every single time the ball's hit to them, and that we are able to keep them safe. I'm here tonight to say that we're really so pleased that our numbers have grown this year in baseball. We're seeing a resurgence of interest from our youngest group, and that's a really great thing. So thank you for your time. I hope you'll take this proposal seriously. And my other note was about the cow field. The LSSE Commission voted unanimously to support the cow field and also Mill River. So thank you.
Any more discussion on item nine? Yes, I see a hand there, second row. Wait for, wait for the mic.
Phil Goslin, Precinct One. This is the biggest item there, and it is a lot of money. And I live nearby, so over the last 25 years, I've noticed that there's sort of a steady encroachment on the park, on the lawn, on the main field there. And it's become just a mono-sport kind of arrangement. It's all baseball. There's nothing else there. And in that, there's been the steady encroachment of chain link. And on top of that, something that I find kind of offensive is that there's been a sort of a steady encroachment of advertising in there. So, you know, you have the scoreboards, and there was a big Coke is it sign, and some of us protested, and they cut it down. But there's still some little Coke signs. And now there's, on the fences of the baseball fields, there are now advertisements. And I think that there's a problem when you have the beauty of that spot, and, you know, we're using the town money to sort of blight the area a bit, so I think that is difficult. I also want to say that if the dugouts are there, there's already an active group of heavy drinkers that congregate around the salamander statue, and that they do like to then party pretty hard around that area. And they're going to love the dugouts. This will be, this will be great for them. So anyway, I just want to put that out there and see what, what can be done. Thank you.
For the discussion on number nine, yes, right here, second row.
Jim Barat, Precinct One. I use the park every day, or nearly every day. I miss today. Over the last four years, I have seen bicycles that have been parked there for quite some time, clothing left, I mean, not clothing, knapsacks with clothing spread on tables and that sort of thing. A little while ago, there were at least four police walking in the park looking for somebody. They wouldn't tell us what they were looking for, but I don't think you put four police in a park and not have a reason. We know that people camp out there often. I just wish that these dugouts could perhaps be put up during the season and then taken down. I can't believe that it would be that difficult.
Yes, back row in the red shirt.
Nelson Acosta, Precinct Eight. You know, the first time I played baseball was in the island of Puerto Rico. And I was about eight years old. And I remember playing in a cow field. And the problem that we had, because it was a cow field, that there's sometimes, when I was playing in the outfield, if the ball fell on a cow dung, it was an automatic double. There was no, you know, there was no grabbing that ball. And as a kid, I think a lot about the field of dreams. What makes kids grow up healthy, and what impacts children in our community? And I have a six-year-old, and I'm always trying to find positive ways to influence my child. And I think that this would be a great idea. And I don't think we should be deterred by how things are used, because things can be used for good or bad. One of the parks that I take my child, that I have to take my child when he was not in school, was Grot Park, because it doesn't affect the schools and the school hours. It has a little park, it has a little play area, it has a walk areas. And I've seen people using that park with those structures for smoking, you know, the waiwi, for drinking. And it's supposed to be used for kids, but there was college students and adult students and kids who were not supposed to be in school, and they were using that open space wrongly. So I think it should not deter us from making a baseball field that is functionable for our kids, that our kids can be proud of, that has dugouts, because you know what? People, when they want to do bad things, they'll do anything. And it'd be nice that if we use our police and town to protect our kids and protect their facilities, then protect other adults who behave wrongly. We spent a lot of money on feasibility studies. I think we should spend this money on our children. We really got to invest a little bit better on our children. And I think those, the Mill River area has a lot of history. It's done a lot of good for our community. A lot of people use it, and it would, it would improve the quality of our Little League baseball. And I think Amherst, that's something that we can be proud. I'm supporting this.
Further discussion before we move on. Yes, right here in the front.
Larry Kelly, Precinct Five. So I eavesdrop on public safety an awful lot, and Mill River is a routine stopping place for Amherst Police. And by routine, I don't mean dealing with drug addicts and rapists or anything like that. I just hear them say, you know, "I'm going through," and they drive through, and I don't hear any sort of bad things going on there. Not nearly as bad as, say, Meadow Street or some of the other, or, you know, Hobart Lane or some of those places. So I don't think I have any concerns whatsoever about those dugouts being used for illicit activities. But I just had a simple question. How many kids are involved in the Amherst youth baseball?
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
No, no call and response, please. If you want to be recognized, you can. Further discussion on number nine before we move on. Yes, back corner there.
Ben O'Connor, Precinct One. These fields are on public land. I agree with the needs as outlined by the chair of the baseball group. But one of the concerns that I had that I expressed before the process even started, and LSSE Commission was entertaining these requests back in August and September, was what process is in place either by the baseball organization itself or by LSSE to ensure that children who want to play baseball are not, find themselves unable to do so because of financial need? Do you have a subsidy program in place, or does LSSE have a subsidy program that affects the use of these fields? And could somebody describe it just briefly so that we know that we're, we're building and basically repairing fields that are available to all the children in town who want to play baseball?
Mr. Buddington, would you like to respond to that?
It's a great question. We're the best deal in town. It costs $100 a year to play Little League. For most other youth sports in town, it's over $200. Anybody who cannot afford that $100 simply petitions by basically a phone call to the president, and we work it out.
Thank you. I'm going to move on now to number 10, and then I will open up to the general discussion, but at that point, it also will be okay for a motion of the previous question. So is, any discussion on item number 10, CPAC administrative expenses? Yes, you don't have to. Yes, front row.
This is doubling, though, right? The 1750.
Next year.
Next year, okay. Oh, please. We are not interested in conversations between you and other members.
So my question was, now that we've increased from 1.5% to 3%, does this double next year? Larry Kelly, Precinct Five.
Ms. Streeter, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, we actually seem to get an extra year at the lower rate, so it will double next
Okay, we're now open up to general discussion on one through seven and nine and 10 before we come to a vote. Yes, third row from the back.
Gordon Freed, Precinct Six. For those of you who know me, you may not realize that I actually did play Little League when I was about eight years old for one season, I think. When we talk about a dugout, is that a ground-level protected area, or is that something dug down into the ground?
So you want to respond to that?
It's ground level. There's very little construction involved, really.
Further discussion before we come to a vote. Yes, on the aisle right here.
My name is Janet McGowan, still, from Precinct Eight. I have spent hundreds and hundreds of hours at the side of fields in Amherst and around the area. And I have to say, in general, we have amongst the worst quality fields in almost every sport. And I've spent way too much time at baseball games and Little League games. It's a really long game. The poor, I mean, it's, and that actually, I mean, it's a long game. Poor field conditions can be, you know, when you drive by a field in Amherst and it's green, it looks great. If you walk across it or you're running in it, and there's holes in it, and it's wet or it's muddy, or it's ripped up or overplayed on, it's dangerous. Kids, kids fall. A ball hits a divot, hits them in the face they didn't expect. They twist ankles. I go on a 10-minute thing about my kids' ankles. And I'll be going to PT tomorrow with my son for his ankle. The running lanes at Mill Lane, where the kids run to advance to bases, is like concrete, and kids rip their knees open and hips open, their skin up, like through their, their uniforms. And that doesn't heal during the baseball season, I can say, and I've seen it. It just, they keep on hitting it again and again. You can't really talk an eight-year-old boy not into sliding, because his knee's open and it's really hard to cover through a season. That dirt has to be replaced. I've never seen anything like it anywhere else in Western Mass. It's a long game, and the dugouts and roofs are needed to protect the kids from the sun, the rain, and the sleet that comes down early in the season. The kids are sitting there. You can't guarantee they're wearing sunblock. And there's a remarkable number of boys who will be sitting on a bench in this long game, and someone hips it pot-fly up, and basically everyone's screaming "ball!" and they're just sitting there waiting to get hit in the head by a ball. And I, you know, there's no cure for that that I've seen. And some of them look up and they just don't move. And so I really, I mean, I think that's a safety issue, and you're sitting there as a parent, like, oh, my God, you know, what next? And then it happens, and there, you know, there's another next after that. We need safe, well-maintained fields. We have some fields that teams won't play on, you know, like the Zomeck Field, teams won't come and play on three days after rain because it hasn't drained. Mill River is tired. It's beautiful. It's hokey and nice, but it's not safe. And we just, I think we need this for our kids. Thank you.
Are we ready to come to a vote? Yes, in the back row.
Tracy Lee Bouchier, Precinct Six. I have one more follow-up question in regards to the Strong House. Sorry, but the partnership, excuse me, actually, I wrote this down, so. The mention of the museum partnership, my final question would be, will any proposed or future partnership of the museum result in the collection in part or whole being removed from Amherst?
Somebody wants, Mr. Walt?
About selling off collections or otherwise losing? No, that's very bad. I mean, there, there, that's very bad policy. Occasionally, one deaccessions items that are not deemed pertinent to a collection, but if one does it, it's under very strict circumstances, and the money is used to finance the care of the existing collection. But there's no plan to deaccession. That's happened in the past. It's bad policy. So the idea is to put things together, not take things away.
And now, are we ready to come to a vote? I see a hand at the back of the aisle here.
Going back to fountains, I hope that sometime in the not-too-distant future, the WCTU Fountain on the North Common, which also is the only place for dogs to get a drink, will be restored.
Okay, I do not see any other hands, so we are coming to a vote. Reminder, we are voting on items one through seven and items nine and 10. All, and this is a majority vote. All those in favor of approving these items, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. We now move on to item eight, which had been divided out, the North Amherst Field Improvements. And Mr. Brissette, do you have an additional presentation on this one? Additional comments?
Jim Brissette, Precinct Six, LSSE and CPA Committee. This is just a different way of looking at the recent funding for the different allowable uses for CPA money. The, what people call it the cow field is, is one of the, I'm really not, all I can think of is for, for kids in North Amherst, where they can do, play actively, is Mill River and, you know, because we have tennis courts there, swimming pool, you know, and that sort of thing. Now the baseball fields, thank you. It is also this, this cow It is also this cow field, so-called, which had been used for baseball. You might have seen players playing cricket on it. Unfortunately, cricket is, has severely damaged that field because if you think of the way most of the action cricket is, it's up and down, it's in this one lane. So this proposal is going to allow the field to be used for multi-purposes. It's not just baseball, it is any kind of youth sport. And again, whenever the field isn't scheduled out, it is open to anybody to play frisbee or whatever on. The fence and parking, which I know some people have some concerns about, those are all going to go through the typical site plan reviews. There's no, as far as I know, there's no plan for just a cheap, chintzy, chain-link fence. And if you think how close to the road that field is, once it gets used, there's going to be spectators, there's going to be a lot of kids potentially running around, hopefully. We really need a fence to protect from traffic, especially anyone who goes down that road. No, people also go very fast down that road, too. And the parking, again, is just, you can think of it as a safety measure because we don't want people to be parking along the street, making that narrow street already narrower with the amount of traffic and the speed traffic goes. So I think this is a very wise use of the money to rekindle this field. This is going to really help recreation throughout the town because this will allow some other town fields to rest. As other speakers have noticed, we do have, we're in great needs of refurbishing many of our fields. So this will allow some fields to rest, which will help and have kids be able to still play. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Perot, you ask to be recognized here.
I'm actually here to ask you to defeat this article, which is rather strange because it's a technical, but as I understand it, it's a technicality in these circumstances. Actually, what I'm hoping for is a much more comprehensive and much better result for this field. And because I'm concerned about actually putting parking in what is already a limited space and so close to the Mill River. My hesitation in going forward with this proposal, which is a very modest one, I may say, is that our, and I would like it to be more, is that our North Amherst Village Center is once again the focus of attention by the town. It's my understanding that several meetings have proposed this summer to include residences, residents, businesses, and commuters in order to develop a plan that will promote greater safety as traffic to the area increases with new development. The Village Center is an important historic location containing the church, library, and old schoolhouse, and it has immediate access to this important open space, the Mill River and recreation fields. Any plan that results will undoubtedly be complicated and potentially require acquisition of land, but many feel this is long overdue and are eager to find reasonable solutions for all constituents. Safety and parking, the two main issues targeted by this modest proposal, are also key issues that the town must address in promoting a pedestrian-friendly village center that will support the larger Amherst community with economic development. I hope that the applicants will express their needs in spades in the conversations ahead and that we can go forward together with no one feeling defeated, but rather looking forward to a comprehensive village center plan that finally includes the necessary adjacent and appropriate parking for the field out of the floodplain and an improved, much improved, recreation space suitable for a wide variety of uses. Thank you.
And Ms. Mills, you also ask to be recognized on this? Nope. Okay, we're open to discussion on item number eight. Is there any discussion or should we come to a vote? Yes, third row there. Wait, wait, wait.
Thank you. I have a, Molly Turner, precinct one. I have a question about how this vote goes before, is this going to be voted on separately? Or, anyway, just please be clear.
Good, good point of order. So yes, we already have approved items one through seven and nine and 10. We are done with them, they are approved, and now we are just talking about number eight. A yes vote will follow the CPAC recommendation, an appropriate $50,000, and no vote would not. Yes, let's have a microphone.
Thank you, Mary Streeter. Do we need another motion for this separate part?
No, we don't. Because we made a motion on the whole thing and then it was divided out.
All right, thank you.
Yes, right here, fourth row from the back. Yes, you.
Is that on now? Kenton Tharp, precinct one. I go by that field several times a day. And I'm inclined to agree with Ms. Perot on this, that there is a lot of potential. I mean, it's a small field and it's the kind of a field that could be used for little things in a lot of ways. And it is being used for little things in some sense, you know? There's not great big baseball playing there. There might be a little softball, might be some frisbee, might be some other things. But I really think to spend $50,000 there without really having an overall plan and a little more thought, I understand there will be, you know, site plan review and all those things, but I really think in terms of the greater view of things, it would be a night, there's no hurry in my mind. It's getting a lot of nice use, people enjoy it. I don't think there's any hurry, I don't think it's that dangerous. I mean, there's no, doesn't seem to be any problems. I mean, I go by there a lot and I haven't yet seen any frisbee or ball out in the roadway on either side, and there's roadways on both sides. But put up a fence, which may not even, you know, go in with the historical nature of the library that's, you know, that's nearby it, and also the other land there where the old gas station thing used to be. I just think there's a lot of planning that needs to go into this. I don't think there's a hurry to do it now. I think some more discussion about it and maybe a little more finessed proposal brought back with some more ideas would be better. And we could save that $50,000 for a better plan in the future. So I would encourage you, you know, not to approve this now. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Steinberg?
As I said previously, the select board had talked about each item. And on this one, I guess that I'll reflect on it from the select board discussion, from the fact that I'm the liaison to the LSSE Commission and from what we, the presentation we had from the Community Preservation Act Committee. I really appreciate that the Community Preservation Act Committee, which had a lot of funds available to it this year because the voters recognized the importance of all of the kinds of projects that we could support, came in with very cautious recommendations and very thoughtful recommendations and did not just try and come up with the use for every dollar. They really thought very hard about it and this $50,000 was something that was substantially discussed and well-thought-out by the committee. The LSSE Commission had come in with this request to the Community Preservation Act Committee because it recognizes that it is a field, it is a ball, it is a playfield already, it exists, it has substantial problems with it. We have a shortage of fields in town. We need, as was previously commented, to rotate the use of fields and take some out-of-use at times because fields need to be circulated out-of-use to have a chance to rejuvenate the grass and the drainage, just as a matter of course of the amount of wear and tear that they get on the fields. So what we have here is a field that was attached originally many years ago to an elementary school. It exists, it needs to be upgraded in order to make it a useful field and to make it a part of our inventory of fields all over town. It provides a lot of opportunities for a lot of different sports. Frisbee was mentioned as one, soccer, there are many things that can be used for this field. And with all of that in mind, we thought that the $50,000 proposal from the committee was a very sound, well-thought-out recommendation, and that's why we supported it.
Thank you. Mr. Zomek?
Thank you, Dave Zomek, Assistant Town Manager, Director of Conservation and Development. And I just wanted to give a little bit broader perspective on where this proposal came from. This really was a proposal that we developed, my office working with the LSSE Commission, working with DPW. I know Mr. Mauring was here earlier, but his staff worked with us on this. I think an earlier speaker called this a very modest proposal. It is, in fact, a truly modest proposal. And it really comes out of the open space and recreation plans and earlier discussions we've had on the floor of town meeting and in various meetings throughout town, which is, let's improve and fix what we have before we build new. This field has been inactive for most of my lifetime. This is a modest proposal to activate the field, to simply create a safe environment with adequate parking. We have parked illegally and without permission for years across the way in the old service station. That is not an acceptable way for us to operate. So this, through the use of a very modest safety fencing along Sunderland Road and a modest Questone parking lot out in Wright Field for, you know, call it 15 cars, will activate a park that has been relatively inactive for a long time. As an earlier speaker said, this will still need to go through the Conservation Commission, the Design Review Board, and the Planning Board, site plan review. So there will be adequate time for additional design input throughout the next six to eight months. I'm happy to go through a couple of slides if people have any questions about where the parcel is and what it looks like.
Further discussion. Yes, right here, third row.
Deborah Timberlake, precinct one. I live in this neighborhood personally. I love the idea of seeing this be a usable, safe, family-friendly space that can be more accessible. I think our families can really use this space.
Thank you. And now, third row center.
Chris Riddle, precinct two, just a question. I believe, I haven't heard anything about repairing the base, the drainage, the growing surface and any kind, anything like that. I recollect this as kind of a ratty field. Is there a proposal to make it nice and smooth and safe?
Mrs. Zomek?
Again, I think the use of the word modest was very appropriate here. We purposely did not come to you with a more significant proposal to redo the turf, put in drainage, put in, you know, subsurface base, anything like that. The field has been rested for a long time. And in fact, earlier this spring, when all the rest of our fields were wet, I went by and I believe I saw the Varsity Ultimate Team practicing there. And that told me that they couldn't get on any other fields and this field was the best field that they could find. Just one comment about young children. Formerly, I did some coaching in Amherst and when, I don't know if I have my pointer here, but this is the area that we are most concerned about. So for the Amherst Varsity Ultimate Team, we're not really worried about discs going out into Sunderland Road or them following those discs. But when you're coaching 10-year-olds in soccer or baseball or whatever sport, that you do not want anyone going out into Sunderland Road during your practice or game. It's very dangerous and the cars are moving very quickly there. So I will also assure the body that this will not be a chain-link fence. We're looking at period fences. We've costed out, got estimates for period fence, and all of that would go through the Design Review Board, the Planning Board, and of course, any of this would go through the Conservation Commission because it is adjacent to the Mill River. But again, it's more than 130 feet from the Mill River, so we feel very confident that that's something that could be worked on. The old backstop there, which is falling down, I believe I have photos of that bill, will also be removed.
Is it with your PowerPoint here?
Yes. Can I try? There's a view of Sunderland Road and, there it is. That backstop, my guesstimate is probably 60-plus years that that's been there.
Ms. Kruger?
I just wanted to make a comment as a member, not as a select board member, but for myself. I have a particular soft spot for this field and this area because about 40 years ago, my daughter was in a parent co-op in the basement of that old elementary school. And I remember that field and all of the incidental uses that happened there. And I would say the traffic over the last 40 years has increased and the need for recreation space has increased. But now that I have grandchildren in town, I see this as a child safety issue. Moving the parking to the other side of Sunderland Road and putting up the safety fence, if I'm there and kids are playing, I think we have a real obligation to address this. And I don't see anything so permanent in what we're doing here that if there is a plan for the Village Center areas, people talked about, which is probably a really good idea, I don't think anything we would do in the future is precluded by the modest improvements we're talking about now. So for me, who have children, who played there, will be playing there, I just see this really as a safety issue and kind of fundamental. So I just wanted to speak for myself in support of this expenditure.
Let's see, all the way in the back there.
Barrett Hierkell, precinct four, I call the previous question.
Motion of the previous question has been made, has been seconded.
Seconded.
It's been seconded. We will now come to an immediate vote. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we will then come to a vote on 17A, number eight. Everybody with me know what we're doing. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's two-thirds. We will now come to a vote. Can we get the motion on the screen, preferably showing the number eight portion? That's good enough. That's just one to seven, nine, and 10. Okay, so motion abided. So we are now voting on the appropriation for item number eight only, since we've already approved the rest. Majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. We now move on to 17B, and that's the Hall Property Acquisition Open Space. And I call, let's get the motion on the screen. And I call on Ms. Streeter to make a motion.
I move in t-
Make the articles on the screen, I'm sorry.
Mary Streeter, Chair of CPA Committee. I move in terms of the article.
Motion was made and seconded. You may speak to your motion.
Mr. Moderator, I request that you recognize Paris Boyce to speak on this.
Yes.
This was one of our most popular articles with the public.
So Ms. Boyce, you have five minutes to speak to this.
Hello, Paris Boyce. I am a member of the Conservation Commission and on the Community Preservation Act Committee. And I just want to thank you for letting me speak. So, I think Dave is trying to get a picture up behind me of the map of the area so you can see exactly where it is. But the town wants to preserve approximately 31 and a half acres known as a Hall Properties off of Old Farm Road. This is just off of Route 9 near Rolling Green and, you know, where the Valley Medical Group is, Hall Drive. So this includes the southern portion of Owens Pond and the eastern side of Gull Pond. These properties are adjacent to the popular Wentworth Farm Conservation Area. The town has received a land grant, which is a local acquisitions for natural diversity grant. And that is for $235,655. Here it is, the big check. The town is seeking $105,995 from CPA funds for the remainder of that cost. The Conservation Commission, which voted unanimously to support this project, prioritizes this acquisition not only for its ecological value, but also for its recreational value. The Commission uses the Open Space Recreation Plan to guide its decisions related to open space preservation and only identifies priority parcels as some land that's just not critical for protection. This is. This property drains into the Fort River and is important for maintaining the health of the Fort River watershed. It includes Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program Priority and Estimated Habitat for Rare and Endangered Species and Biomep 2 Core Habitat. It includes unique wetlands, wet meadows, fernal pools, as well as ponds and pond edges. The preservation of these properties increases a contiguous block of preserved land used as a wildlife corridor. It completes the protection of both Gull and Owens Pond, and it ensures that the Ken Cutback Trail remains intact. Right now, there is an informal agreement with the current owner to allow the trail to go through the property. This would, this would make sure that the trail remains in place, and that trail connects Kiwanis Park and the Fort River with the Norwattic Rail Trail. Owens Pond, Wentworth Farm Conservation Area, and Gull Pond are widely-used natural resource areas, maybe one of the most popular ones in town. It's well-known for hiking, cross-country skiing, snowshoeing, fishing, kayaking, birdwatching, ice skating, and dog walking. Lot of dogs out there. It's easily accessible. Trail parking for Owens Pond and the properties adjacent to Wentworth Farm, it's just off of Route 9 on Old Farm Road. It's, it has wide and relatively flat trails, which are loved by many, and you can even access Gull Pond by car. Public support for this project was very strong, probably one of the strongest I've seen in the three years on CPA. There were many residents who attended both the Community Preservation Act Commission meetings and the Conservation Commission meetings when this proposal was on the agenda to voice support, and we received lots and lots of letters of support as well. People really love this area for its recreational aspects. So, thank you for letting me speak, and I hope you support this project.
Thank you. And is Ms. Angus here to make a statement for the Conservation Commission? Or is Mr. Zomek, anything to say for the, or anybody for the Conservation Commission? Guess not. Ms. Ratner for the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee also recommends this section of the article by a vote of six to one, rather, six to zero, one absent. It is inappropriate use of CPA funds.
And Mr. Steinberg for the Select Board.
The Select Board voted unanimously to support this motion and this part of the article. And just a couple of personal reflections. As a member of the Select Board, there's some things that do that are really pleasurable. And one of those, they don't come on that often, I have to admit. But one of the ones that did come along was that I went with Mr. Zomek up to Turner's Falls when they presented the land grants, and that check that was held up earlier was part of presentation when the state was awarding various grants to various communities. And so I had the delightful part of being there when that was given. We don't get to use that money if we don't put up our local part, and so this is our local part. So I didn't think that that was necessarily made clear, but it needs to be clear that the two are tied together. We don't get the grant that that check represents unless you vote yes on this. And the last thing is, being somebody who frequently walks on those trails, you know, until it came along that we had this opportunity, I didn't realize that that pond actually didn't entirely belong to the town and wasn't entirely a part of the conservation area. I think that we, those of us who walk there, and if you haven't walked there, you should. It is beautiful, and to know that the entire pond and the one across the street will be within town ownership and Conservation Commission control, I think, is really a delightful thing that we can do for the town now and into the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Hang on. So before we open this up to discussion, this is an, can we get the article back up on the screen, please? So the motion was made in terms of the article, and the article does use the phrase eminent domain. I've been told that it's highly unlikely that eminent domain will be required for any of this acquisition. So the way it's going to work, and this is what town council has advised, is this will only require a majority vote to pass, but it will require a two-thirds vote if at any point eminent domain might be needed. So I will listen, and I will declare a two-thirds vote if I hear it. If I'm unclear, we will do a count of it. But if it doesn't get a two-thirds, but does get a majority, it still passes, but then eminent domain would be absolutely out of the picture. And now we are open up to, actually, before, I have one person requested to speak, Susan Ritter, if you're still here. Yes. If you'll come at least to the back of the aisle here. And Ms. Ritter is a registered voter in Amherst, but introduce yourself.
Susan Ritter, Precinct 6. I was actually going to speak in support of 17B, but you've already done my work for me. Thank you for speaking up. I think that it's just, it's, it's a wonderful idea. Support it, vote yes. Thank you.
Is there discussion? Yes, second row, right here. Raise your hand. And I should mention, if it's at all possible to stand, I ask people to do so. It's easier for other people to hear you, see you, understand you. If you can't, I understand it, but if you can, please do.
That's hard for an old lady. Oh, Eli Manir Gotti. I was wondering if you could outline the ponds on the property.
Can we get the map back up there again, please?
Sure, there's a couple of ponds on the, on the property. The proposed acquisition, one is called Owens Pond, the larger. And the smaller pond is to the east and south, Gull Pond. And as Paris said earlier, what's interesting about Owens Pond is that we only own to the midpoint of the pond. So this has been privately owned for many, many years. I think that that might help a little bit as well to find the project and have the roads in there as well.
Further discussion. Yes, in the back row over there.
Richard Morse, Precinct 7. I've walked back in there and on the Cutback Trail, and you get your boots, it sometimes gets very wet back there, and you get your boots down in the water there. And I've been there on beautiful days when I can forget that I'm in a, basically, a small university city. I've been here in town meeting off and on since 2001, blithely voting for more acquisitions of open space. At the same time, I have neighbors in my neighborhood who are living on fixed incomes, trying to continue to stay under the existing tax burden. My question is, is there a place in which people are discussing the continued acquisition of open space versus the continued preservation of land that is taxable, land that could be used to broaden our tax base? I'm very for open space, but I just wonder, 10 years out, 20 years out, are town meet, are we going to have town meetings that are continuing to acquire open space and essentially taking more and more land off the tax rolls? I think there's a balance there. So when I walk back in those areas, then I really enjoy them, and I enjoy the silence, and I enjoy the birds. I'm still thinking this land is still needed for tax purposes at times.
Ms. Zomek.
It's a great question. I think I've addressed it in various ways before, but I think, first of all, my office is, the title is Conservation and Development, so we are always looking for opportunities for positive change and opportunities for growth in Amherst in the, in the places that our master plan, our open space plan, our housing production plan tell us they should be. I think our open space plan, I was at a meeting recently, and I addressed the meeting, and I called myself kind of the middle reliever. Pete Westover was the starter. I see myself as a middle reliever, and there will be a closer coming after me. But we, we are reaching that point where I think we're seeing the puzzle, the final puzzle pieces come into play and into view, and then it will really be all about taking care of that land in perpetuity. As, as the speaker noted, a lot of this land is very wet, and the Conservation Commission is very particular about looking for land that may have other uses. And in fact, my eyes are always open, my staff is always looking for land, in particular right now, that might give us the opportunity to create affordable housing and protect open space at the same time, and we have a couple of parcels in mind for that. This one, given its proximity to the ponds, to the water, to the wetlands, is really not one of those properties. And you can see that around it is surrounded by subdivision land, Hall Drive, which is really, has been a medical offices, et cetera, for years. The best, the best space, the most developable space around this has already been developed. I hope that, I hope that helps.
And right here in the second row.
Carol Gray, Precinct 7. I just wanted to speak for a moment about open space. It's actually one of the best economic uses of land. There's a myth that development will automatically help the economic welfare of our town. But in fact, I was very familiar with one proposed development on Southeast Street, which would have involved 17 units. And when I calculated the impact on schools, $18,000 per student, offset by the taxes that would come in, the town would have lost over $100,000 per year on that residential development. So it's really a myth that the more we grow with residential developments, the better it will help our town. In fact, open space is a very good economic use.
Thank you. Yes, second row over there.
Richard Rosnoy, Precinct 9. Couple of questions and a comment. One question, I noticed the line on the northwest parcel goes through Owens Pond, but for Gull Pond, it goes around the edge. Are we not obtaining access or property rights to Gull Pond also halfway through? Second question is, what is the underlying, underlying zoning here in this parcel? And is there, has there been a determination that it would never be developed? This sort of relates to a prior comment about loss of possible tax income. My comment relates to this sort of a proposal. Whenever we have a proposal for acquisition of open space, I think it would be appropriate to indicate what the underlying zoning is and the prospects for development. And my third question is, now that we've approved funds for an Economic Development Officer, are you still going to be, is Mr. Zomek still going to be Director of Conservation and Development?
Let's start with the first question, that's easy. So in green, the first question was about Gull Pond. So what about the rest of Gull Pond? The west side of Gull Pond, as indicated here in green, is already protected. So hence, this project is to really complete the protection of the boundary around Gull Pond. So the border all around Gull Pond would be owned by the town, controlled by the town, and managed by, through the Conservation Commission. The second question was about underlying zoning. I'm looking to Mr. Tucker. It is certainly a residential zoning. I don't know it off the top of my head, but I will say, I'm happy to have Mr. Tucker come down and speak to that. I will say that, again, my office includes conservation, sustainability, planning, inspection services. So our team looks at all of these properties and makes a decision as to whether to, you know, what recommendations we make to the Conservation Commission regarding priorities. So as I said before, we're looking, I probably have five that I'm looking at now that we would actually work with the Housing and Sheltering Committee, perhaps the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, and our other affordable housing partners, to see if there's a way to do a joint acquisition, where we acquire some of the land for affordable housing and the remainder for, for open space. But you will not see us acquire, or I don't think you'll see the Conservation Commission prioritizing parcels in village centers or areas that have been slated for development or growth of any kind.
Thank you. Always looking, oh, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jonathan Tucker, Planning Director. Both of the properties here are zoned neighborhood residence with a planned unit residential development overlay. This was part of a much larger PERT proposal in the 1970s, and these are remnant portions of it. Both of the properties here are very wet, as those who have walked through it have already described, and it would be extremely difficult to develop either property. The property to the southeast would have a very difficult access. The property to the northwest, next to Owens Pond, most of those lots would in fact not be buildable if they went through the wetlands process.
Who, somebody said point of order, I'm not sure who.
Richard Rosnoy, Precinct 9. Once again, I wonder if we could get a response to the last question regarding administrative-
That's not a point of order. If somebody wants to raise their hand and be recognized to respond, they can, they don't have to. Mr. Zomek.
As I said earlier, the functional area that I oversee includes planning, conservation, inspection services, zoning, and community development. So I will be working with the Economic Development Director. I don't know whether my title will change, but I work on a host of different projects, from CPA projects. I was very involved in the rolling effort to preserve units at Rolling Green. So I enjoy my job and hope I will continue in it.
Yes, back corner there.
Vince O'Connor, Precinct 1. So if, on the map that's up there on the, the upper left, you can see the two parcels outlined in yellow, and above the larger parcel on the left, that's outlined there in yellow, that area was the area that Mr. Morales brought a number of times to town meeting to try to preserve and ultimately was preserved in the deal that, that resulted in the preservation of the federal building on Northeast Street. So this, this is completing another portion of that, and I think, hopefully by now, people understand that the parcel, the smaller parcel on the, on the right is really not buildable. And I have been around Gull Pond, that area is extremely wet, even if- Even if, even though you see a subdivision laid out there, what has happened over the years is that as further building took place uphill and upstream from these areas, this area became wetter and wetter, and became less and less buildable to the point where that subdivision is non-functional as a potential building site. One of the parcels, I think, is, is, is rated at $34,900 assessed value. The other is at $1,600. That's, those are inconsequential amounts. Finally, I think the important thing about this is, if you have your, your map that, that was received in one of the packets, is that, that on this side of the Mill River, where the PRRD designation happened, and, which preceded its acquisition by Mr. Flower, who then went bankrupt and so forth, there was a promise as part of the PRRD to preserve open space for the residents of this side of the Fort River, of the easterly side of the Fort River, going out toward Belcher Town. And of course, what these acquisitions do is fulfill that promise. And because as you can see on the map, most of the other land has been subdivided into single-family homes, rather than being built as Amherst Fields is, which is sort of in the central part of the, the housing area. We have small condominiums on, on small lots. So what we're doing tonight is really fulfilling a promise that was made a very long time ago to the residents of this area, that we would preserve open space that was immediately accessible to them as a result of the PRRD designation. So I hope people will vote yes on this article.
And are we ready to come to a vote? I see a hand right there.
Sarah Lecor, Precinct Nine. Not to belabor this, I know it's late, but I just wonder if a conservation restriction was pursued on this property, since we've now determined it's undevelopable pretty much anyway. A conservation restriction is a way to conserve this property, but also then keep it on the tax rolls. So I'm wondering if that was pursued as an option.
Mr. Zomeck?
It was briefly discussed with the owners, but the owners were very interested in selling the property in fee. I will say that the taxes currently paid, the taxes are $3,000 or under on all of the acreage that we see behind me, because it's currently in Chapter 61A, and very wet, as we talked about before.
Ready to come to a vote. Right there in the center? Yes, you.
Sir, version 30A called questions.
Do I hear a second? Motion for the previous question has been made in second. We will come to a vote. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we will then come to a vote on 17B. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion has passed, I hear two-thirds. We now come to a vote on 17B, which requires a majority, but also be listening to declare two-thirds. All those, and can we get the motion back up on the screen? Or the article on the screen, actually? All those in favor of the motion under Article 17B, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Moderator, here's two-thirds. It has passed. And I call on Ms. Brewer to make a motion.
I move to consider, wait for it, Articles 21 and 22 on Monday, May 11th at 7:05 PM.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to your motion.
Although we do have just a couple more articles in between, since we already have the chancellor and the town manager speaking to us under Article 1 at the beginning of the night, I'm sure we'll all be here by 7 o'clock on Monday night. And then immediately after that report is done, then we could have the planning board already be sitting up front and get started with Articles 21 and 22. After we finish those articles, will we then move back to 18.
So this is a procedural motion to hear 21 and 22, basically first thing next Monday after we hear the town gown report. Is there discussion before we come to a vote? I see no hands. Is that a hand or not? Okay, Mr. O'Connor. Sorry, identify yourself.
Vince O'Connor, Precinct One. I think we should proceed in the regular order. I don't need, think there's any need to, to go out of order on this. The next three articles are quite inconsequential in terms of what we're going to do, and will not take up a lot of time. And I think that the, the moderator has, has very correctly tried to keep us from, from engaging in these, these reserve, reservation of time. I think we've, we've gone in order at this town meeting, and I think we should continue to do so. Thank you.
Further discussion before we come to a vote? All those in favor of the procedural motion to hear 21 and 22 first thing next Monday, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator hears majority, the motion passes. Ms. Brewer, do you have another motion for us?
I move to adjourn till Monday, May 11th.
Motion's made to adjourn, not debate. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. We are adjourned until Monday of next week.